Well, got that. Okay, we ready? Okay. Well, welcome everyone to the March 5th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the pledge led by Supervisor Gogan.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have three presentations today. The first is to receive an update from the U.S. Forest Service Representatives regarding matters of interest to Trinity County.
Good morning. What a, what a nice wet Tuesday. The internet is down at our building, so I had to, I just went low tech and packed my laptop across the street for my notes. So I apologize for the awkward delivery here. First of all, I'm sure, I want to give you an update on the wildfire crisis strategy and the Trinity landscape. As many of you probably heard or saw, we did receive our budget finally officially, and it's slightly over $34 million. So that was, that was great news and we were one of the most funded landscapes across the nation. And that has a lot to do with the strength of our partnerships and our relationships and especially in including Trinity County. So thank you for helping us be successful. Along those lines, we have set aside another $1.5 million. We'll be looking to modify our good neighbor agreement to put an additional $1.5 million into that agreement. That's following up the 1.4 that we put in last year. So appreciate the success of that agreement. As you know, that agreement, some of the work that's been done with that is we gave us access to the county's temporary bridge that we were using there at Forest Glen Guard Station to bring hazardous fuels out from the August fire. Also recently, we utilized it to address hazard trees on the Sixers National Forest that were a hazard to, to the county roads and address some of those fuels. Uh, let's see. We have been very active in recreation, so I want to share some of the recreation things that we've been doing. With the, the weather, obviously, the way it is, most of our trail work has been focused in the Weaver Basin. We have been working with RCD fuels crews under an agreement and mitigating hazard trees along the Weaver Basin Trail System. We also have trail construction. There's a La Grange Extension is underway. We're working with our partners to get that section built. The SCV ditch trail is nearly complete and will be ready for use this summer. We appreciate working with SPI to facilitate that new section of trail. And then the Lewiston Trail from Mary Smith to Cooper Gulch, the tread, there's been tread and brushing work has been done there. For developed rec, if you've been to the Pine Cone Boat Ramp Day Use or Cooper Gulch Campground or Ackerman Campground, we had a crew of thirteen, sorry, fifteen to thirty people were out there working, addressing hazard trees, brushing, limbing. It really, really looks nice. They did a good job out there. They were out there for a week. And that crew was made up of Waterset RCD SRC, which is our Recreation Concession Air and Forest Service employees. They spent five days out there. Continue to work on mitigating hazard trees at East Weaver Campground. And then at the Forest Glen Guard Station, for those of you that are familiar with that area, there was a, a great big dug fur that sat right outside the guard station. Unfortunately, it died and we, we were able to get to mitigate that hazard. And fortunately, once we got it down on the ground, we did see it was full of heart rot. So it really posed a hazard to that facility, the road and the bridge. Our crews are also out upgrading the Denny Campground with new fire rings, bear lockers and tables. Yay. And we've got new gates at Tannery and Alpine Campgrounds. And also we have brushed the road to Tannery Hayward, Hayward and the Bowerman Boat Ramp as well as entrance to Alpine. I know that was a concern by a lot of the public not being able to see around those corners with the brush kind of really impeding visibility. Our timber shop is busy finishing up the prep work on pilot. Again, we're looking to put that, get that under a contract this summer and they're out laying out units on Hyampom. Speaking of Hyampom, that planning effort is well underway. Still expecting to get it signed so that we can implement this summer. The same is true for the Bowerman Fuels Reduction Project should be signed and implementation should start this summer. Many of you probably saw the fire camera scoping document went out. That scoping period should close, I think it's at the end of this week, so that we'll be able to get busy authorizing those fire cameras to get installed this summer as well. August Phase Two is at its final hurdle, kind of had a new challenge with, that we had to get through. So that should get, that should get signed soon. And then Big Ranch Stand Exams will start soon. We had our pre-op meeting with the contractors doing our stand exams for that. And I expect that to go out for scoping this summer. There will be a number of field trips for that particular project. Also have had some really good conversations with Jamie Green. Looking forward to increasing our partnership with the Trinity Ops School District, including partnering on a goat herd to do some fuels reduction using goats on, on National Forest System land. So really excited about that opportunity to increase our partnership with, with them. And that's what I had for you guys today. Do you have any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. I've had a couple of people ask me about the road into Hobo Gulch that said there was a big slide at the bottom of it. I don't know. I haven't driven out there to look, but I was just wondering if you knew anything about that.
I do know we have, I'm making a note of it now. Handy to have your laptop. We, we do have a bunch of storm patrols that are out and we are reporting that directly to our force engineer who's bumping that up to the region to look for any of that, any of the storm damage from, from these recent storms. So I made a note of that and I'll make sure we've had people out there to, to get eyes on it. So thank you for that.
Yeah, it's in the, there was a historic slip washout and it's in that same spot, so.
Okay, thank you.
Tara, the Fairview Boat Ramp has got some like trees that, I don't know how those little seeds get down under the asphalt and they start to grow and they're pushing up and kind of wrecking the infrastructure a little bit there. And I appreciate that you're taking care of those campgrounds where safety is, you know, the issue. People can't see around the corner and everything, but when you can get to that one, it really needs the infrastructure piece looked at and then just to kind of clean up along the edges.
Yeah, trees growing in the asphalt is never good.
Yeah.
Long-term for the asphalt, so okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate you guys very much and look forward to continue to grow our good neighbor agreement. And I'll be working with David, contacting David to, to work through that modification. But thank you all so much and have a wonderful wet Tuesday.
Thank you, Tara. Our second presentation, receive a presentation from County Council on different types of conflicts of interest.
Good morning. I do actually have a PowerPoint, but I put it in writing somehow. When I hit my last birthday, my eyes went, so I'm not even sure I could see that far. So I apologize for having to look down, but I'm ready, yep. So first thing is I have, this is a component of the AB 1234 training, talking about conflicts of interest. It is a two-hour training that is mandatory for every board member and every 700 form filler to take every two years. This is the first time I've ever kind of given this update to a board where they're all in compliance. So first of all, congratulations to you, you are all have taken your AB 1234. So this is a refresher. This is some of the information you've already received, but we're going to go through it again and kind of highlight a very specific component of AB 1234. The other aspect of it is that I'm providing this as generalized information. My role as County Council, I represent the county as a whole. I don't represent any individual board members. And these conflicts of interest issues are individual issues for each board member. So I cannot provide individual advice on your specific situation. What I'm going to do is provide you kind of the, the framework and the checkboxes you have to look to. And if you feel you have a conflict, of course, you would go to the FPPC and they would be the proper ones to provide you an answer about whether you have a conflict or not. So the first form of a conflict of interest is the Political Reform Act. And sometimes we call this a government code conflict of interest. And the section that's relevant is up on your screen, but it is, if you have a conflict of interest regarding a specific, a particular government decision that is sufficiently likely that the outcome of the decision will have an important impact on your economic interest and a significant portion of your jurisdiction doesn't have the same economic interest. So this is when there's a, an item before you that there's a significant likelihood will have an impact on your economic interest. So that's a lot of words and they, of course, each word in the state of California is going to be dissected hundreds of times and they're going to provide you different answers. But so I want to go through and kind of go through each of the components of it. The first one is this is applicable to all public officials. And public officials does not just include the board members. It includes all employees and all consultants. So for example, if you have a county council who's on contract, it would apply to me as well. If you have a ad commissioner that's on contract, which you don't, but it would apply to them as well. Or if you have somebody who's providing significant advice to you and, and the status as an employee would apply to them. But we have to remember it applies to all of us, not just the board members. So it's something that the department heads need to keep their eye out on as well. So the next, the next factor is what the FPPC will do. So if you were to call them, and again, I would not recommend calling them when you're dealing with these types of decisions. I would recommend writing them. The FPPC has three ways they can provide you information. One is if you call them, they will provide whoever picks up the phone will give you a general idea of what they think at the time. If you call about 20 minutes later, you'll probably get a different opinion. So it's only as valuable as the information they provide you and the research you do behind the scenes. The other mechanism is you can send them an email and ask them for an answer. They'll typically get back to you within 24 hours. But the information they give you at that time is, they say is not binding. Meaning if you follow the direction of the FPPC through an email and it turns out that it's wrong, they have no liability for it. But the last way is by asking for a formal opinion. And by doing that, you have to state who you are, what the issue is, and they'll come back with a formal opinion. That is binding on courts. So if you go to court and you say, I followed my FPPC decision here in writing and, you know, someone is still coming after me, the courts would defer to that decision. So again, I, I said, call the FPPC, but I prefer if you would write them. But the FPPC, when they get your complaint or they get your issue, they're going to look at these four checkboxes. The first thing they're going to determine is if the financial interest was reasonably foreseeable. The second is, is it material? And the third is, does it affect you differently than the general public? So if you can answer yes to all of these, you have a conflict of interest. If the public has a conflict of interest, again, we will talk in a second about what you need to do to handle it. But again, this is the three factors you have to look at financially, financial interest, that's reasonably foreseeable, material and doesn't affect the general public. Next slide. This is one of my least favorite trainings because it reminds me back to math class where we actually have numbers that we have to go into consideration. But luckily they did provide us an idea of what is a financial interest. And when we're dealing with financial interest, we're not only looking at what affects us, we're looking at what affects our spouse or our partner or our dependent child. Or if we are still dependent on our parents, it would affect them as well. Anybody in your family that you have an interchange of money that's significant, it most likely would apply to. So if anybody in your family or you and anyone in your family has an interest in a business entity of $2,000 or more, interest in real property that's $2,000 or more. If you received as a source of income from whoever is presenting in front of you within the last 12 months of $500 or more. If you have a business entity where you are one of these positions, a director, officer, partner, trustee, even an employee or, but in a management position, it would affect you. Or if you have received a gift or a donation, so a campaign donation of $590 or more in the past 12 months. That just got increased January 1st, so it's now up to 590. So if you have any of these financial interests in the body that's coming for you to ask for a decision as a board member, you have a financial interest and you have to then kind of go to the next step of the FPPC decision tree to see if you have, you have to recuse yourself. Again, it's got to be a first reasonably foreseeable financial interest. It can be a plus financial interest or it can be a next, next slide, sorry. It can be a plus or a negative. But the concept is, and again, this is where we love laws because they're, they don't have full definitions. But reasonably foreseeable, we've, from a legal standard, we usually say it's just not remote or theoretical. I mean theoretically, we can all have a financial interest in somebody if they all of a sudden see us on television and decide they want to donate to us and we go forward. That's theoretical. It's, it's got to be more than remote and more than theoretical. That's the definition they provided us. So again, for real property, they give us even more, more of a definition. It's reasonably foreseeable if the interest is in the named party, is part of a governmental decision and the decision affects real property. So if there is a property before you and it is something you have the $2,000 or more interest in, it is considered to be reasonably foreseeable just by the nature that it's before you. Next slide. And again, we talked about it has to be material. There used to be a rule that if you had one penny interest in it, it would apply. That's not the rule we use anymore. It's got to now be important enough to matter. So they're looking at what we call a reasonably prudent person standard. So a, a general public would conclude that the decision would affect the value of your entity or the value of your property. That's what we're looking at. One penny doesn't matter. It can be, you know, it can be $10. It can be $100. You would have to look at each individual situation to determine if it's reasonably prudent person would determine an effect on it. And for materiality, again, with property, they make it very clear for us and they've actually clarified this for us recently in the past year. The concept is it will have a material impact on your property if it's within 500 feet. So you cannot anymore address an issue related to your property.
Gentlemen, we're having trouble hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. You cannot address or hear about a property that's within 500 feet of your property without FPPC approval anymore. So that's, that's a new rule that just came into effect that if you, if it's your next door neighbor that's coming before you, you would need to go to the FPPC to get permission to hear it. Now between 500 and 1,000 feet, there's no presumptions. It's you have to look at the factors, how close it is, what's your proximity? Is it going to impact your property? What's the view line? Whatever the, what's the smell? What's the construction noise is going to be? You have to look at all those factors. So that's kind of a, a questionable one where you have to look at your own set of factors. Typically, it's our recommendation as county council that between 500 and 1,000 feet, that you should recuse yourself as well. We can go through the factors and look at them, but at the end of the day, it's more important to make sure the decision is fair. And so because there's that complicated set of factors, we do recommend that you accuse yourself on that. And then again, over 1,000 feet, it's presumed you do not have a conflict unless the evidence is to the contrary. So over 1,000 feet, you can do an analysis and determine, but by and large, you're going to be safe. Okay, so the last factor of it is that it can't affect the public generally. And the reason they have this rule is your job is to set law for the entire county. For example, you create and put on the ballot tax measures and fees and stuff that applies universally to the entire county. So if it was, if you weren't allowed to vote on anything that affected the county because it affects you, no one could vote on anything. So they have what they call the 25% exception. So what this is means is if the, the boat you're voting on impacts you in an equivalent way that it impacts 25% of the population, then you do not have a conflict. And we're talking about 25% of the business population, of the real property population or just the general individuals. So we look at it specifically in terms of, again, if it's a property-based issue, we look at whether it affects 25% of the population of real property. Or if it's a tax issue, we look at whether it affects 25% of everybody in your jurisdiction. So again, we, this is to prevent you from not being able to vote on anything. We do have a consideration that if it affects you disproportionately, even though it affects 25% of the population, it affects you disproportionately, you would still have to consider it a conflict. But if it affects you in the same proportion as everybody else, then you would be good to go and be able to vote on that. So for the government code conflicts of interest, you are allowed as a board to continue to move forward, even if one of your members does have a conflict. But it is important that that member disclose what their conflict is. They can't just get up and walk out and this board is very good at that of saying what the conflict is. And then you leave before the conversation even begins. I've been in jurisdictions where folks wait till the vote and then they go, wait, I have a conflict and walk out. This board does not do that. You get out right away and you don't try to influence it from the audience. You get a moment to go and get a coffee. Of course, you are allowed to sit in the audience, even if you have a conflict under three circumstances. The first one is if you're the only one who owns your property and the property is before the board. So if you wanted to do a zoning amendment to your property and no one else owns it, you're a sole owner, then you can present. If, or same thing with the business, if you own the business outright and no one else, you have no partners or no managers who can present, then you can present from the public. Or if you have the sole direction of the affected business, I mean, that's when if you're the manager, you're the one that knows, no one else knows your facts. If you have anybody else who can do it, even if they're not as good as you, if you, you know, if you have a spouse that can come and present or you have a business partner, even if they're not as articulate as you, you still have to let them do it. But if you're the sole one, you are allowed to stay in the room. Next slide. So that is the Political Reform Act. That's the law related to it. But what it also addresses and what we also have to consider is common law conflict of interest. So the Political Reform Act specifically says when you disqualify yourself based on proximity, based on numbers, based on financial interest. And it's somewhat clear, not perfectly clear, the, where it comes into the problem and where we're constantly having to have these conversations is for the common law conflict of interest, which is just as important as the Political Reform Act. And essentially, all this is common law is, is that you as a public official or all the staff as a public official are prohibited from acting in their own interest at the expense of the public interest. So you can't put your interest above the interest of your constituents. And this has and can be seen in a number of different ways. And so it's really important that when any item is coming before you, you do that internal analysis of whether you have a interest personally in what's going on, whether the outcome affects you personally and affects your own interests personally. And from a county council's perspective, again, we are, we have a tendency to be over cautious about any sort of conflict of interest because these are the one area that things do get overturned if a court were to determine that there is a conflict. For the Political Reform Act, it's pretty clear the FPPC will step in, they'll tell us. But for common law, that's an argument we'll see in court. So if we, if somebody has an interest, a personal interest, whether somebody's family member that not dependent on them is involved, whether somebody has publicly expressed opinions prior to hearing evidence, whether you have a personal or interest in it above what a board member should have, those will come up in court. So it's important to do that analysis. It's also important to remember that there's perception and reality. And sometimes perception is as important as reality. And so again, we want to make sure the decisions we make as a board are upheld and that they're perceived as being fair. So if, if presenting or appearing on an item would potentially make the perception be that it was not fair, that's something to consideration. Now, this doesn't mean just because someone says you have a conflict, you should get off. You have one. This is an internal discussion you have to have with yourself and with the FPPC or with any personal legal counsel you have. Because you know, again, I've been in situations where somebody doesn't like, they know somebody's going to vote some way because they voted that way for the past 10 years. And so they're now claiming they have a conflict and ordering them, you know, get off the, get off the podium, you have a conflict. Just because you voted away prior doesn't make you have a conflict. You know, you have to do that internal analysis. Just because you've been on the board for, you know, for long enough to hear this issue twice, just because you have a personal opinion on it, doesn't mean there's a conflict. It has to be that this influences you and it has an impact on you and your personal interest, not your political standing. So again, I do highly recommend though, that if this comes up is to do that analysis in your head to determine whether not only there's an actual conflict, but whether there's a perceived conflict and whether it's worth continuing forward and voting on it even with that perceived conflict. So that's the government code conflict of interest. The next one is the 1090 violations. And these are a little bit more serious because they cause some significant problems and prevent what the county can and can't do. These are ones you cannot recuse yourself and walk out. It just cannot come before the board. So what 1090 says is you shall not be financially interested in any contract made in your official capacity or by anybody or board which you're a member. So it means this county cannot enter in a contract that would benefit any of its board members. Even if you recuse yourself, even if you step out of the room or even if it's a negative impact, you cannot go forward on that. And so this means we can't even start those conversations. We can't, obviously you can't vote on yourself. Obviously you can't disqualify yourself. We can't even start those discussions if it would financially impact a member of our body. So the FPPC gave us another decision tree that we have to go through. These are the factors that we consider. Public official for the purpose of 1090. So it is more than just the board members. We'll talk about that in a second. Does the issue involve a contract? So anytime the county is binding to somebody else, even if it's done orally, it's still a contract. Is the official making or participating in the decision? So as a board member, you're always making or participating in the decision because that is your job, can't recuse yourself. It's just part of the process of being on the board. Does an official have a financial interest in the contract? Does that either the remote interest or non-interest exception apply? And does the rule of necessity apply? So the last two are the exceptions and we'll go through what those exceptions are because everything has an exception. So for step one, as I said, public official, obviously legislative bodies involved, but employees and consultants are also. So if you have a high ranking department head or somebody who deals with financials in your county and their spouse is part of a contract, we do have to still do, you know, they own a business that we're contracting with. We still have to do this decision tree. They may not. Step three may not apply because they're not the decision makers. If it's the board, it will always apply. For the department heads, it may not apply. But it's something we consider. We look at whether they're going to benefit from a contract. No one gets into public employment to make money. That's the joy of what we do. It's getting here to lose money. So we have to make sure we comply by that. But it also again involves to consultants. So again, making and participation, which is step three. Oops, I think we're two. Click, click. There you go. So we are making a participation. Again, we talked about that. So if it's a department head that has a financial interest, they can't do the negotiations, they can't do the discussing, they can't do anything involved in it. Even if they say, well, I'm not taking it to the board, someone else in my department is taking it to a board, they need to separate themselves completely from it to begin with. If it's a board member, again, you can never do that because you are always involved in the decision making. So it can, if any of your spouses has a business that you want to contract with, you can't. Even if it's, you're not making or participating. So the remote interest is really interesting one and it actually applies. It's one of those laws that actually applies to rural jurisdictions a lot more than it does to to the cities and the next two both kind of are taking into consideration the situations we have up here. So there is a list under 1091 of all the remote interests to have. And there's dozens of remote interests, meaning you don't have enough of an interest in whatever is coming before you that would actually have an impact. So the example I always use is that, you know, my grandfather gave me, you know, one share of Disney stock. I do not have corporate ownership over Disney because I have less than 3% of the income and less than 5% of their total stocks. So if Disney were to ever want to come and present to us, I wouldn't have a conflict because my interest in that business is remote. And again, the, if you think like I have a tiny bit of interest, but it's not a lot, I would go look at 1091 because that's going to tell you specifically whether you have enough of an interest to trigger 1090. And if you don't have enough of an interest, then you don't have a 1090 violation. You can move forward on it. In those situations, you disclose and disqualify yourself because even if I have point 0001 ownership of Disney, I still disclose that, but the board can continue forward and vote on that because it's not a 1090 violation. And again, the rule of necessity is another small jurisdiction one. This is if the, if there's no other mechanism to get the services that you need, you can look at it. We have a situation up in one of the counties I work in, it was very remote. They had one vet in the entire county. The closest vet was 500 miles away, actually more than that. It was a long way away and they had a canine as part of their sheriff's department. When the canine got sick, they had to go to the spouse of one of the board members who was a vet because otherwise they wouldn't have made it in time for the dog to survive. That's the rule of necessity. It's got to be, there is no other options. You'll see that, you know, plumbing, roofing, stuff of that nature when you have emergency situations. Fix the emergency and then put it out for RFP and see what you can find. But there is a rule of necessity that if you have nothing else, if there's no other mechanism to get that service to your jurisdiction but to contract with somebody who is related to you, then you can look for it. But again, when we do that, we're going to do it publicly. We're going to go for RFP. We're going to see who applies. We're going to see what's available. And we're going to make sure the public understands and that they have an opportunity to comment on the fact that this is the only service available in this jurisdiction. Okay, so 1090 is, they consider it to be a pretty significant violation, which is why again, if you think there's any possibility if that you or a family member would benefit from a contract that's being entered into, actually let me rephrase that, benefit or be harmed by a contract that the county is entering into. You do want to get an FPPC decision because any contract that violates 1090 is voidable. And we would have to give back all the money we receive from it. Or conversely, we would have, you know, if we paid for services, they would get to keep the money and we would be in big trouble. It is also violation is considered a felony and it does have potential imprisonment. Really doesn't happen very much. More likely what's going to happen is there will be a lifetime ban from public office. So whoever participated in it, whether it's an employee or a board member, they would, FPP would say you're no longer allowed to serve in your position and you can never run again for any public office. The last thing I just wanted to talk about is that I do get this question a lot. That, that is there a conflict of interest once you leave office? They call it the revolving door. Whether we as department heads or you can come back and lobby in front of this board that which you used to serve on. And the answer is there is a one year ban, but it only applies if you're receiving compensation to lobby before the board. So if a board member or a department head or any employee leaves employment with the jurisdiction, they're welcome to come back as a citizen and voice their concerns. What they can't do is receive money from a third party to come before you. So that's, that's the distinct factor that I kind of, as I was preparing this, I know that question had come up before, so I thought I'd throw that in. So that is conflict of interest in a quick and New York speeded nutshell. I'm going to happy to take any questions on it. I can see Jill agreed that was very fast. So I, I wanted to get it all out there, but again, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions. The PowerPoint is available for everyone as well. And there is a ton of resources if you have questions.
Yeah. Ashley, would you, when you get a chance, send that to all of us? That, thank you. I was taking pictures just to make sure I was getting for my notes, but thank you. Anybody have some questions?
It seems like the biggest takeaway is be aware and get it in writing. Would you agree?
I, that is, thank you. You summarize my, I have two summaries for mine is when in, you know, when in doubt, get out. And when in doubt, get the FPPC to write you a written decision. Those are the two biggest takeaways. They are a great resource. There's no reason for you to wonder. Now, we've all had that experience where we've gone to them and their answer is more confusing than the question we provided to them. I would encourage you to ask again or ask it a different way because once we get that decision from the FPPC, it is binding. I, I know board members who frame it and put it on their wall because it's binding. So that issue can never come up again. The public can't say anything because we have a decision. But again, I have seen situations where they refuse to answer or they say it's not within their jurisdiction when we know it is. We do remember the FPPC does have a revolving door of employees. And so again, it's important to, if you have a question to follow up, get more clarification and get that in writing.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. You can go first.
I, I want to go back to the coming before the board within a year of, of service. I only ask this because when I was on the waterboard, we had rules as well. And so I'm just trying to understand. Can someone come back before the board within a year of service or maybe leaving a department head position or something? And, and I guess maybe ask questions or, or work with an organization or a group because now they have privileged information and that information now becomes part of an argument that they wouldn't have normally had access to that information, but because of their service, they do.
That's a really, yes, a good question. So when, when you leave service as a department head or as a board member, any privilege or confidential information received remains privileged and confidential. And any penal code that applies to revealing confidential information will continue to apply to you. So if somebody were to leave service and go to a competing agency and provide, you know, our, our negotiations for real property or any information that would be protected under the law, that would be a violation of the penal code. So it can't happen, but shouldn't happen. If they do, we will report it. A citizen can come, if someone can leave our agency and join a nonprofit or join another agency and come and advocate on behalf of that nonprofit, but they can't use the information they've received as a county employee.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I, I think it's interesting, one of the reasons that this has been coming up, I believe, is because of the various cannabis opt out matters that have been coming before the board or the ad hoc committee and so forth. And so listening to all these different criteria. I know we did the math and more than 25% of our population lives within opt outs. And so you could say, okay, well then it doesn't matter because it's equal. Then you could go to the next level and say, but are you within 500 feet or between 500 and 1,000 feet? But what I heard is even if you're beyond 1,000 feet, if the individual felt like they would still be influenced in their decision, whether they're in an opt out, out of an opt out, whatever, it doesn't really matter. But that, that last part seems one, very gray because it's, you said, it's an internal assessment. Do you feel that you would be influenced by the outcome of this decision?
You nailed it. Yep, that's exactly correct. It is an internal discussion. But if you feel that you, your family or property would be impacted by a decision that's before you, particularly if it's disproportionately to the rest of the population, you, you would most likely have a, a common law conflict of interest. Because again, you're putting your personal interest before the interests of the community as a whole. That is a decision each board member has to do that internal evaluation to determine if you do.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for this. It's, it's not exactly perfectly straightforward, but it's very helpful. Okay, our third presentation. Health and Human Services Adopted Proclamation of Appreciation which recognizes March 2024 as Social Work Appreciation Month. Read first. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity proclaiming March 2024 as Social Work Month. Whereas social work is a profession truly dedicated to helping people with a primary mission of enhancing human well-being and to help meet the basic and complex needs of all people. Whereas social workers put a particular focus on helping people who are vulnerable, oppressed or living in poverty. Whereas social workers follow a code of ethics that calls on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people. Whereas social workers meet people where they are and help people and communities reach their full potential. Whereas social workers work in all facets of our society, including schools, hospitals, community organizations, the military, mental health centers, social service agencies, corporations and local, state and federal government. Whereas social workers are on the front lines in helping this nation solve pressing social problems, including an increased demand for mental health services, an opioid addiction crisis, an economic inequality. Whereas social workers are in high demand with some states reporting shortages in social work staffing and the Bureau of Labor Statistics predicting social work will be one of the fastest growing professions in our nation during this decade. Whereas the 2024 Social Work Month theme, Empowering Social Workers, embodies the need for society to help support social workers so they can continue to do the life-affirming work they do and help address societal needs. Whereas social workers in turn empower people, communities and our nation, helping everyone achieve their full potential. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity hereby proclaim March 2024 as Social Work Month in Trinity County and call upon Trinity County citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers and Trinity County Health and Human Services in celebration and support of the social work profession. Duly passed and adopted this fifth day of March 2024 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and members of the board, staff. Liz Hamilton, Director of Health and Human Services. And I have today, here in the audience are two managers. One, Angie Burgland, she oversees child welfare and Amy Scribner overseeing adult services. So I hope that this is actually presented to them specifically after. We recognize and appreciate the work that our team does every day. But I love that every March we get to hold space to collectively say as a community that we see you, we see the work that you're doing. And the team, small and mighty for the entire county is a team of 20 between the two divisions. And I'm proud of the work they do. It is a 24/7 job. They share in on-call, weekends, everything. It is not an eight to five by any stretch of the imagination. So, but it is a team. It's a team of social workers, the support staff, the admin staff, our legal team and court services and our law enforcement partners, so sheriff's office and probation. And, and I would actually probably underpin then the friends and family that support this workforce that, that often gets probably the short end of the stick when they come home and they're exhausted. Social workers and the staff are healers. That is what they do. They, they see the underside of the community on a daily basis and they show up to help. And it is not a very old system. It is 50 years old this year. 1974 is the first time that it was introduced into legislation and policy and funding. And while social service programs came about under Roosevelt in the 30s, they were an idea and a call to society to help. And so it wasn't until the 70s where it was formalized following Social Security Act and et cetera. And so it's an evolving system and often complicated and ever-changing. I think in my tenure, I have seen in child welfare alone, a reform three different times. And in adult services, our state just dedicated funding to training of staff in the last few years. And so it's an evolving legislative and policy process. And of course, the end of the day is to serve our most vulnerable children and elders and the mix in between. So I just appreciate our staff and everything that they do. It's selfless. Yeah. So thank you. And I'll let them come and receive their proclamation.
Thank you.
Do you like a motion?
To approve?
I will make the motion to.
I will make the motion to approve.
I will second.
Motion and a second.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Frasier. Chairman Lutwiler.
Aye. Anybody have any additional comments before we present?
If you would mind, I'm sorry. I just wanted to echo what Liz said. One of the most rewarding parts of this job is getting to work with those social workers. And it is hard for the population of the world to understand the pressure that is on them on a daily basis, the life and death decisions, and the families that they're working with to try to bring back together. And it is a true honor to get to work with them. You have a really good group here.
I I just have one comment, and that would be that my heart would be that you remember to take care of yourselves as well. When I hear the on-call and sharing of weekends and, you know, you get called out, my guess would be is if it's really off-hours, it's a really uncomfortable thing that has happened and the impact that that has on you might be something that goes unseen. It builds. And so I just, I appreciate so much what you do, and I care about you too. Want to make sure that you get the care that you need as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, I I would echo and just say, I'm struck by, I think most of us live our lives in a bubble. It's it's the bubble of the people we know, the friends that we make, the places we go, the things we do. And that bubble for you is burst every single day. So you you and your teams are out there working with people, as we said, struggling at their at their deepest. And and so you see and feel and live things that many people aren't even aware that are taking place. And I recall in the in the brief time on the fire department, when we would have counselors come, when when people had on the team had experienced something particularly traumatic because they recognized how impactful that can be and that they needed people to take care of themselves so they could continue to care for others. So I I I echo your your comments, and I know that you care for your teams very much and you're there for them. And and I just know that we're there for you, and thank you so much for what you do. Y'all join me? We'll present and get a photo.
Mine's a green pen. You don't want that.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move to public comment, but we're actually going to do this a little differently. And today, Ashley, I'd like to take public comment online first. Be right there. Oh, and I'm sorry. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department or follow up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. So, online?
Veronica.
Hi, Veronica Kelly Alves, Douglas City. I wanted to take a moment this morning and recognize our local athletes throughout Trinity County. This basketball season, we saw tremendous success in Hayfork. Of course, Trinity High School. Trinity High School won their second sectional championship within the last two years. They made it to the Elite Eight as they did two years ago at state competition. We had an unprecedented three home games because of how hard they worked during that season. And I want to encourage our board to support activities for youth within the sports arena. Most of these athletes have gone through our Parks and Rec program and have developed their skills through volunteer support. Providing them infrastructure and programs to build those skills helps them transfer all of that to college opportunities, employment opportunities, and one of the most important, mental health and physical health. So I just wanted to acknowledge them for all of the amazing things they've done this season, as well as Trinity County community, because they showed up and showed out, which is exactly the message we want to give our visitors when they come to Trinity County. This is the place you want to come, shop, enjoy, chat, have coffee, eat something, stay, and hike a trail, but support these athletes. So a big thank you to the community for that as well. But congratulations to all of our amazing youth athletes throughout Trinity County. Thank you for all the good times. We'll see you next season. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other race chants.
Okay, in the room.
Good morning. I have an issue with today's election for District Two. A friend of mine the other day was complaining that she's been in District Two forever, and she was no longer in District Two. So we looked it up on the map and she is in District Two. So she called the elections office and told them that they gave her the wrong ballot. So they said that she was in District One. Of course, she didn't vote District One last election, but so we did some more research and she is obviously in District Two. So she called back and she ended up talking with Shawna White, and Shawna said that she that the center line of Brown's Ranch Road was the boundaries for District One. If you look at the redistricting map that you guys voted on and passed in 2021, Brown's Ranch Road, this this is a picture of District Two. Brown's Ranch Road is definitely in the middle of of the district. So there is 80 parcels above the center line of Brown's Ranch Road up to Highway Three, which I have no idea how many voters live in that area, but if they've been disenfranchised, then you have an issue with with this election in District Two. And that's something you guys need to investigate. Because it's obviously that Brown's Ranch Road, I mean, from her, from her house to the west boundary is a half mile to the east boundary. It's a seven, seven tenths of a mile, and northly, it's almost two miles in how far she's in within District Two. And she was told that she was in District One and did not have the right to vote.
Thank you.
Good morning, Connor Nixon. Everybody knows this is Election Day. There may or may not be some changes on this board as a result of that. A month or so, but a month or so ago, I sat here for a couple of hours watching you work and conduct a meeting. For me, this board has been a marked improvement over the past two boards of supervisors. No backbiting, no name-calling, no dividing up into sides. Just five people trying to act like adults running a county government. As they say in Home Depot or in Lowe's, when you check out as a veteran and you get your 10% discount, they always add, "Thank you for your service." Thank you for returning the institution of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors to the dignity it deserves. I wish to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Belenko, Douglas City. Just one follow-up on, I listened to the Conflict of Interest presentation. And I know we have, I think, at least one hearing today, and we do generally have hearings here. I always try and impress upon my kids my esteemed wisdom that it's never too young to start developing good habits. My wife always adds that it's never too late to start developing good habits either. California law has a unique aspect regarding ex parte communications for administrative bodies, particularly legislative bodies, when you're sitting in quasi-judicial, which is to say hearings. It pertains probably more to the Planning Commission because they do it more often than this board does. In court, ex parte communications pretty much disqualify the decision-maker. In this context, public policy supports communication with political leaders. The only requirement to kind of purge ex parte communication is before the hearing, anybody who has had ex parte communication reveals that so that it can be addressed during the comments on that. So I'd encourage the board, I I know we've done it sometimes, but not always, maybe make that like putting on your helmet before you ride a motorcycle. A good habit to get into. On another note, I I've been snowed in and thinking about the perennial questions of Trinity County, amongst them carve-outs. This is my own idea. I'm not speaking for anybody on this. I didn't even talk to anybody else about it. However, when we talk about the licensing program, from the outset, we've always said licensing itself is a mitigation. It's a a way to make cannabis have less impact. And, you know, I don't exactly where the 500 number came from, but it was more or less 10% of what was the estimated grows when we started that ordinance. So I think what causes conflict with the carve-out areas is new grows coming in. So I think one thing to consider would be a reasonable time, not April 1st, but sometime to say, after this date, if you have a property that hasn't had a grow before, it's too late. Or if it's not, the route is a CUP. After that, only properties that have already had grows can have the mitigation effects of licensing. Just putting it out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I won't take much of you guys this time. I don't even know if you guys have any answers to my questions. I'm here because of tree removal, contracted pud, tree removal guys. I I basically want to know, is there any distance that there to have those trees that they remove off of the highway? Is that even you guys' jurisdiction? To answer, or should I be reaching out to somebody else?
Well, and actually, in this mode, the board is kind of in receiving mode versus in dialogue mode.
Okay.
But I just do want to make sure I understand what you're specifically asking for, because we can make sure that someone follows up with you. You're talking about timber that needs to be cleared from the side of highways.
Correct, correct. Our public roads here in Trinity County, because basically, I'll tell you a little story real quick and sweet. Near my home, a turkey vulture hit the power line last fall, fell to the ground, started a fire. Would have been a grass fire, but there was a digger pine that contracted. Pud guys were out there clearing and left right next to the side of the road. Well, once that grass fire got up to that, it just took off and came very close to losing my home. And I'm in the construction business, so all summer long I'm gone. So all winter, I'm clearing properties, getting my ladder fuels up so that my family is safe while I'm not home. So for me to do all that, and then for them to clear trees and just leave them next to the road, it's kind of defeating the purpose of me trying to take care of my investment. So that's, I'm just trying to get an understanding of, is there a certain footage that they should be off the highway or? I mean, because you can't just leave these trees right next to the highway. Right now, it's fine, winter, but come summertime, it's just going to dry up and be a serious fuel sitting next to the road. And I just want to address that. That's all.
Okay. Well, yeah, it did. So just so we're clear that depending on whether we're talking about county roads, state roads, so forth, that makes a difference. But if you can give your contact information, just write it down on a piece of paper or something for Ashley, then we can make sure that the right people follow up with you.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment in the room? I'll give a minute for Ashley to check if there's any more online. Otherwise, we'll wrap up public comment.
I have no race chants.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we will close public comment and go into reports and announcements. The first is report from department heads.
Morning, Chair, Board, Tim Saxton, your sheriff. Just a couple of things to talk about today. Give you a little brief synopsis. I wasn't here last month, so I'll talk about some of our statistics that we've done over the last couple of months. January, our statistics, 911 calls to our dispatch center, we had 441. Our non-emergency calls into dispatch, 1,128 calls. Total deputy activity, we had been respond to 586 incidents, generating 128 reports. Out of that, there were 57 arrests for misdemeanor felonies and a total of 49 bookings into the jail. Our average population in the jail for January was 49. In February, our statistics, 911 calls into the dispatch center, 394 calls. Non-emergency calls, 991. Total deputy activity, 545 responses, generating 138 reports. Total misdemeanor and felony arrests were 69, generating total bookings of 57. And again, our total average, and this is average population in jail, is 49. Our animal control calls. January animal control calls were 61, generating 14 reports. And in February, 59 animal control calls generating 11 reports. The snowstorms that we've had this month, we've had two search and rescue callouts. One of those was two days. Eight to 10 members went out each one of those, and we were successful in rescuing the individuals on both of those. So that was outstanding. And I just want you, board members, to realize that all of those search and rescue members are volunteers. They don't get paid for this. We call them, we page them out, they respond. It's an excellent excellent program that we have. The equipment that we have over in our Sar Barn, they they utilize those, they train on those pieces of equipment, and those are all maintained with the the budget that we get from you, plus Title III money and money that is generated from donations from the public as well. And we have a couple of grants that we get as well. Put this on your radar as we approach, we just had the mid-year budget review. One of the things that I want to put on your radar is the jail health medical services. We are required, as you well know, to provide medical services to all the inmates in our facility. This particular year, we are experiencing phenomenal increase in those costs. And to let you know that we are now maxed out on our budget on that, as we still have a couple of months left in this year, we do have some claims in our catastrophic inmate insurance fund. insurance fund that will pay for some of those, but we are running out of money. And as we get towards the end of the year, there could be a possibility where we will be coming back and asking for some contingency funds on that. We don't like that, but it's just a fact of life that these costs are going up. The population that we are seeing in our facility are requiring increased medical care and those types of medications are becoming more and more expensive. We're doing everything we can to keep those costs down. But it's just a fact of life that those costs are going up. Last week, I think all of you are aware that we were serving a arrest warrant, search warrant in the Lewiston area. As my team was making entry into that house in Lewiston, the subdivision, they encountered gunfire. Luckily, my team did not get hit by that. The individual did fire again at them. They were able to secure the area. I contacted Shasta County, requested their SWAT team to come up. And they did so and they made safe entry into the residence. And we ultimately took the subject into custody. So I say that because I need to remind all of you and the public that this is a dangerous job that we have. And oftentimes, people forget that, especially here in Trinity County. But my staff, my deputies, we need to be aware of the fact that they put their lives on the line every single day. So it was a safe outcome. We took the individual into custody. He's in the jail and we're continuing the investigation into his crimes. So with that, do you have any questions?
I do. Not to let my question override the impact importance of your final comments. And so thank you for the work that is done and the danger that you do encounter for that. And for those that the most vulnerable that you're protecting in those moments when you do that. Thank you. Appreciate it. I just did want to ask quickly, without me having to go back and look it up, the contingency funds that you may be needing to come for later, were those a part of what was listed on our mid-budget review? There were a number of things that were itemized there and is this a new one or is this something that was in the list?
I don't recall. I was out of town. I don't remember.
Areas that was highlighted as a watch area. So it's on Sheriff's radar and it's on our radar as well.
Thank you. Thanks.
While at Naco, I had the opportunity to look at a program that other small counties are using to help bring down their medical costs. And I'd be more than happy to share that information with you. Maybe we can have a meeting or something and to talk about that.
Yes, we have gotten some additional information on some programs, especially with the insulin reimbursements. But that's not available until 2025, but that is on our radar watch list as well. But I'd be happy to talk to you about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other department head reports?
I have no raised hands.
Report from county administrative officer.
Thank you, Chair. I got a couple items to just roll through. So just as awareness, our public defender contract is due to expire on the 30th of June. And RFP is in draft mode and will go out in April with the new contract start date of 1 July. Again, that's for Public Defender Services. The Cannabis LJAG Grant, which is local jurisdiction assistance grant. I am happy to announce that the amendment was signed yesterday evening by both the county and DCC. This is a big, a big effort that Drew has been working on. The amendment did not change the overall grant amount, but it updated the grant to reflect how the county has been using the funds in relation to the specific staff allocations and time. And now as we go through our every six month update with DCC, you know, it'd be much, much more efficient for staff to go and tell them exactly what we've been doing because the documents in the grant will reflect how we're actually set up operationally. You know, as one example, you know, when we originally put in that grant a few years ago, there was a line item in there for a biologist. Well, we've never hired a biologist on staff in the cannabis division. So it's always been a, that's just one small example, but I'm really, really happy about the fact that, you know, Drew was able to work this very diligently over the last number of months with the DCC staff and bring this to resolution. Part of that amendment will allow us to use some of that money to implement the Ocella software, which was presented on the, at the February 6th board meeting during, during the presentation, if you recall. So we will be pursuing that, that, that actual contract, you know, will come back to the board. That will not only include the, some licensing and some aspects to run the, the program from the cannabis division, but that also will include the tax aspect through, through Terry and the tax collection department, which we're very excited about. The next topic, the overall general plan process. The process really kicked off in earnest last night with two community meetings, one in Junction City and one in Lewiston. I was able to attend the one in Junction City. The next meetings are on March 14th and then the next set of meetings are planned for the week of April 8th. We will obviously stay away from the, the date of April 11th, which is the next PC meeting or the PC meeting in April, I'm sorry. And we're trying to do the best we can to deconflict all of these meetings, but as I have stated before, over the next nine to 12 months, there is a number of meetings. When you look at the overall general plan to include these community plans, to include the zoning aspect that's going to kick off here in earnest shortly, to include the housing element, there's lots and lots of community touch points. And again, we're going to do our best to deconflict meetings, but inevitably there is going to be some conflicts for individuals. But we're going to try to get those meetings out as, as in much advance as possible so individuals can make decisions as far as what, what events they want to attend. The next topic is Trinity County broadband. I'm trying to work for a full board update later in April, but there have been a few recent like internal forums and there is a lot of good work happening. Some of it is viewable along 299 as, as you've seen actual conduit being, being put in the ground, but there's a lot more efforts going on. And I think the board and, board and public will benefit from a full update. We're shooting for April 16th for that. And also just like to recognize the DOT crews for the number of road and storm related items they're, they're currently working. You know, in addition to the, what I would consider, you know, more than normal standards, so snow removal activities that they're doing this time of year, which are beyond normal and the efforts they do in that arena alone are commendable. But they're also working a few active slides and some more slip out areas on roads throughout the county. And I just want to thank them for their efforts and dedication to the safety of our county. And then last, I've got another feedback form. I've read some of these in the past and I always like reading these. This one is from the county clerk department from February 29th, so just a few days ago. And, you know, Lisa's the employee, all, you know, very positive remarks. Staff is always very courteous and professional. Lisa deserves a raise. Well, Lisa, I would love to be able to give you a raise, but we will, we will do what we can. And I just would like to say, you know, publicly, thank you for what you do on behalf of our county every day. And that's all. Thank you.
CEO Tad Hill, one question, April 8th, where would the meetings be at?
Those are going to be at various locations. So those are, those are for the, the remaining four community plans. So it'll just depend and that's the whole week of, of that week of April 8th. We're, we're looking to schedule the different meetings, but that's going to be in Trinity Center, High and Palm, Post Mountain. And there's one more that slipped my mind, I know, but those, the next four.
Post, Post Mountain, High Palm, Trinity Center and
Okay, so last one, yep, Pay For It. So those four will be that week.
Any particular day or just in that week?
That right now and we'll announce that as soon as we get, probably within the next week or so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Supervisor Gogan, we'll start with you for supervisor updates.
Yes, I have no out of county travel. Just a little update. Now that we're in full swing here in the wintertime, little update on the lake, the lake is about 73, 74% full. We will probably get north of 80% full by the end of this water year, which would be a vast improvement over the last five years. It will also be beneficial to the fishery as we're running under rod flows right now. So the the flows will go probably late into July, which is always helpful for fishermen. And with that much water, we will probably have no problem generating, generating power. So it should be a good year for us from where we were a couple of years ago at 20% full now to 80%. Mother Nature came through again. So we'll take it and we will fall into a wet water year. I'm not sure if everybody knows the five destinations of water years, critically dry, dry, normal, wet and extremely wet. We are solidly in the middle of a wet year. If it stopped raining today, we would probably more than likely be in a wet year. And if it rained a bunch from today, we probably wouldn't pop out of a wet year into an extremely wet year. So mentally going forward, it's probably best to look at this year as a, as a wet year, which we haven't had in, in a while. So great news. Instead of having to try to figure out how to bank water from where we were a couple of years ago to having the lake full now or close to full, we're really kind of take the pressure off Trinity County to try to pull the right levers at the right time to, to bank water. So I more than happy to see that it's raining and snowing out there. We really needed it and this was God sent, so we'll take it all. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Carpenter-Harris.
I have no out of county travel to report. I just attended my scheduled standard meetings with the California RC Andy and the CRC and DCA and the Fire Safe Council. I do want to take just a few minutes to say thank you as CAO, Mr. Trent said to the DOT department, it's, it's, we've had a couple significant slides in my district and the report out is that our Trinity County Roads Department has been there and has begun to facilitate the opportunity for removal of those. And I see our trucks running around and I know that in each one of those trucks is someone's loved one and they are out there working and living in the same environments that we are, but their families are at home without them being there. And I'm super grateful and appreciate and value them as individual people and also as county employees. It's, it's nice that they're available to do the work and folks are really grateful for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frazier.
I also had no out of county travel. I did attend the Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting on the 21st of February here in Weaverville. And on the 26th, the Behavioral Health Services Stakeholder Meeting also here in Weaverville. And there'll be more of those to follow. Nothing really to report.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Cox.
Thank you. I also had no out of county travel and regular meetings included Fire Safe Council and NorCal EMS. I also did attend the Polig meeting for the Minersville Boat Ramp and was encouraged at what those engineering plans look like. And my concerns were answered for the present. Hopefully that continues the way that it looks like it's going. I would just update this board regarding NorCal EMS. It's exciting. This will take a lot of time, but always nice to see when something that could have some really significant impact for the future is kind of a kickoff. So I want to let you know about it. Our Southern Trinity ambulance system lost federal funding seven years ago and has been struggling to keep that service, you know, in the, in the black ever since. No many was found until they got to the state and met with Assembly Member Wood three years ago. And with his retirement upcoming, they are looking for a new assembly member with whom to speak. But the exciting point would be that they are making a lot of phone calls and a lot of contacts and a coalition is quickly building to see what kind of impact they could have on making emergency medical services federally recognized within our state. Nine or 10 states have achieved this to date. And so it is kind of an exciting prospect. And just hats off to Brooke Insminger. She is a member of the NorCal EMS Board and also an emergency service provider for Star and is leading this. And then the NorCal staff have taken it up with support from the board and then we'll see how that grows and what becomes of that in months and probably years to come. So again, it's a tiny baby step, but it's an open door and something that's exciting for the future. So that's the end of my report.
Okay, I apparently was the only one doing out of state, out of county travel. I was in Anderson last week for the NORTEC board meeting. That's the Workforce Management Board meeting. And we'll be in Sacramento later this week for both the CSAC board meeting and the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board meeting. At the NORTEC meeting, the board adopted all the recommendations from the ad hoc committee confirming the strategic direction and concrete action steps that will be taken by the organization and documented some measures of success. So they're saying, here's our strategies, here's our priorities, here's what we're going to do about them and here's how we'll measure our success. So it's been great and apparently that's all new for this organization. So people seem to be pleased that that's falling into place. With the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, I participated in the pre-board meeting. This is a situation in which there are four counties in our subregion and each county has a board member on that group, but only one of those people is a voting member. And up to this point, it has been the folks in SISCU. Staff is actually recommending at the board meeting that takes place this week, that for the next two years, starting next, next year, Trinity County will be the voting member. So we're, we're the newest to the, to the game, if you will, because we only recently were brought into that organization. And it's nice that we'll have that opportunity if it gets approved, which we assume it will, that we will now have a voting member role for 2025 and 2026. As Supervisor Frazier mentioned, I was at the Mobile Crisis Stakeholder Meeting and I thought it was very interesting. Just wanted to share, you know, this is a two hour workshop that bringing people together that are involved in response to the crises faced by our residents. And it was great to see the collaboration that was taking place and working together to see how we can best serve the people that are facing those crises. Tended RCRC Legislative Update Conference Call. It's a virtual gathering in, in which they provide updates regarding key developments of interest and importance to rural counties. And there's nothing in particular I'm going to highlight here, but I just wanted to let you know that those are happening and I, Supervisor Cox was also there as our RCRC representative. I was there as our alternate. Community Plan Workshops, just reminding residents, as we heard from CAO Tad Hill, that those meetings are taking place. We had the community plan in Lewiston last night that I was in attendance for. There was a much bigger turnout than any previous community plan work or general plan workshop. So it was great to see the participation. Hope that was true for the other ones and that continues. New hire orientation, I participated in that in last week's onboarding program for the new Trinity County team members. It was, it was a good opportunity to talk to the new folks coming in and give a little bit of background and answer questions. It was nice to see some new faces coming into the county. And I, and I applaud the effort to have a strong onboarding program. And I, and I applaud the effort to have a strong onboarding program for these folks. Economic Development, met yesterday to discuss economic development ideas with representatives from both Lake County and GoBiz regarding different ways that resources can be brought to bear to help us. So Lake County has done some interesting things, much like we've often mentioned SISCU and their great work in economic development. But the folks at Lake County were also very helpful and offered to provide support to us as we launched down that path. And the GoBiz representatives gave us a ton of great information, of ways that we could access different funding, different technical support, all kinds of things. So we just continue to uncover, I would say, a lot of opportunities that we need to try to take advantage of. And I spoke briefly with Sarah Akridge from the Forest Service, who's responsible for the lakes and such. And so she wanted to mention that she is still following up on questions related to the Trinity Lake Marina. The permit holder, whose asset is the actual Marina, has the permit to have it where it's now and also up at either or at Trinity Lake Marina and, and Trinity Center Marina, I'm sorry. And so they're working with them about how and when that will be loc, how, when, and where that will be located for this season. But that work is ongoing for now. And that's my report.
Question on that, I don't, I don't understand.
Okay, sorry, I probably said things wrong.
No, I'm sure that you said it just fine, I'm just not familiar. The location of the Trinity Center Marina?
Yeah, there is a, a Marina that's portable, but it's can basically be kept where it is right now, which is where it is for lower water levels, or it could be moved up to Trinity Center, but only when water levels are at the right level. And so a lot of people in Trinity Center are saying, water's up, where's our Marina? And so she's working with the permit holder to, to work through those issues.
Thank you.
Okay. Ad hoc Reports. On cannabis. CAO Tuttle, I think the only thing is to say that through your leadership, we have sort of refocused our efforts, and rather than meeting each week, we're going to let the time, we're going to meet once a month with the idea that the time in between is spent making progress that we can then finalize and such together, making better use of all of our time. Fair? Okay, thank you. And from Tribal Relations?
The only thing that we have to report is our hope to have the Noralmac and Sonnagway tribes come before us to do a presentation on their current standing with federal recognition, and then also from there possibly move into a update of our memorandum of understanding with both tribes.
Any questions for that Ad hoc Committee? All right. I will finish my notes later and move on. On the Consent Calendar, these items include routine non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the Board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the Board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. And we'll take public comment, start with a line?
I have no raised hands.
Any in the room? Okay, I would like to poll, where is it? Trent, can you help me with State Route Three, which one is it? Three point one four, that's why I wasn't to the last page. Poll three point one four just for some discussion.
I'll pull three point one, just for a couple of questions.
Three point one?
Three point one four is actually under the Trinity County Transportation Commission. So we'll do that actually after the Consent Calendar.
That's under Transportation on Consent.
Okay.
Oh, I guess it's...
Okay, yeah, go ahead, poll.
Still on Consent.
Okay, just, so we will handle it separately, just to make sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to address the balance of the consent calendar with items three point one and three point one four being considered separately.
Make a, a motion to approve the consent calendar with pulling three point one and three point one four for further discussion.
I will second.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Luth Wiler?
Aye. Okay, item three point one.
So just a couple of questions here. In the fund...
I guess, I'm sorry, I should, I should read that since we're considering separately, sorry. This is under Auditor Controller, three point one, approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2324 for Trinity County Waterworks District Number One, Department 8667, increasing revenues by $2,248 and services and supplies by $6,630. No impact to the general fund, current cash balance in Trinity County Waterworks District Number One, Fund 667 is $10,444. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Is there only one fund for the Waterworks 667, or is there multiple?
Good afternoon, this is Christine Gaffney with the Assistant Auditor, Controller's Office. There are two funds for Trinity Waterworks District One, this one is specific to 667, which we need to be able to give them their tax apportionment dollar amounts, but there wasn't enough in the budget to, to give them their revenue. So therefore, we just need to do the budget adjustment to, in order to give them their tax revenue.
Is this a standard amount that's usually left over at this time, $10,000? Is it commiserate with the rest of the years passed?
Um, well, what happens with Trinity Waterworks District, as well as a couple of other districts and some of the bonds, is that we disperse their tax revenue every January and September of every year. And we give them everything that's sitting out there in their cash total.
Okay, thank you, it just seems like a small amount of money for the Waterworks District, $10,000 does not seem like a lot. Which is what made me pull this thing, I would, I would have thought that they would have a lot more than $10,000, but I think, I guess I'm wrong.
It is only the, it is the first disbursement of this calendar year, they were supposed to get a disbursement in September, but unbeknownst to me at that time, there was a key error and it went into, and it came out of a different fund, so we're, we're fixing that so that they get their, their full revenue, but we can't do that until the budget adjustment is posted, approved by the Board and then posted.
Thanks for seeing, and you did say there is a second fund for this organization as well, correct?
Yes, and that's separate from, from this, this fund, because they have their sewer and then their water.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's fine.
We will take public comment.
I have no raised hands.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
A move to approve is presented.
A second. Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Luth Wiler?
Aye. Okay, slipping to three point one four, which is under Trinity County Transportation Commission. Adopt a resolution of concurrence to approve the Caltrans District Two State Route Three Corridor Plan, no impact to the general fund. Excuse me, and the, the reason that I pulled this is I had shared this with some folks, just that I assumed would be interested enough to take a deep dive on this, and they did, and so they provided a number of thoughts about changes that should be made. And I reached out to Director Panos Kokas, and, and he communicated with the folks with Caltrans, and they very quickly responded to almost all of the changes that were suggested, and so I think it's, those can easily be adapted. There was one item that I just wanted to mention that I think we may need to have discussion about, and that is that the Noralmac Win Two Tribe is not listed there, and the reasoning given from Caltrans is because they're not federally recognized. And speaking with tribal representatives and with the individual who raised this, they, they felt that it really should be reflected, so I don't know you know, where we need to go with that, I don't know if Panos is on the call to provide guidance, but that was the reason it was polled. Do anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, any public comment?
I have no raised hands.
I haven't, I have, I just have a curiosity. My hope is that although they're not federally recognized, that their archaeological find, locations and their sacred sites are not discredited because of that. So making sure that the folks are identified and given the opportunity to look at things is very important, I think.
I wish I'd be on one, so if you have questions for him.
Yeah, and I would just, just add, and then Panos, if you can speak to this. The tribal representatives did indicate not just that they wanted to be recognized in that, but that there were very specific areas of interest and concern to them. So I do think that, to the extent we have the authority to at least request, if not require, that that be addressed in this plans, I think, I think that we should, that's my personal view, but I'd love to hear from Tri-Tokokas.
Yes, hello, this is Panos Kokas. Usually we're required to put tribes that they are recognized by the federal government rather than the ones that are not. The other part is this is a Caltrans document, again, they follow all the regulations. We have with us the Assistant, the Associate Planner, Ms. Natalie Kinney, who's also on the call, and she can answer some of those questions. But like I said, in the past practice, we always recognize the tribes that are recognized by the federal government rather than the ones that they want to be self-recognized. But again, this is a Caltrans document, and they're the ones preparing it.
And you said that a representative from Caltrans is on to speak to that matter?
Yes, she's on.
Okay.
Hi, this is Natalie Kinney, District Two. I wrote this plan, I've done the public outreach for it, and I understand the concerns. I did work with our tribal liaison during this process of getting the tribal information. I can work with her again to talk more deeply about this information and kind of see what she has to say as well.
Okay, thank you. And I, I gather this was here basically saying, adopt a resolution, I should have read this, my apologies. Three point one four, adopt a resolution of concurrence to approve the Caltrans District Two State Route Plant Three Corridor Plan, maybe I did say. So if, if there is a resolution to approve, and there's still this opportunity to have a conversation that might lead to a change, is there any problem with this being postponed until you have that conversation and can come back to us?
I can come back next meeting on March 18th or 19th, I believe.
Nineteenth?
Yeah, the next meeting with an update of of what I, the information I get from my tribal liaison and hopefully get the adopted concurrence there.
Thank you.
Natalie, quick question, you did say you already had some conversations with this liaison prior to the production of the document?
Yeah, so I reach out to her and she usually reach out to the federally, federal-recognized tribes within the corridor to receive like their information.
And so is the feeling that that, that didn't happen at all, or it just didn't happen to a comfortable like quantity of understanding?
No, it did happen, but it seems like this tribe is not federally recognized, where we mainly look at federally recognized tribes.
Okay, understood.
None of Trinity County's tribes are federally recognized.
So am I the only one that's confused? Okay.
I, I understand what she's... The, the process is to reach out to their tribal liaison, that tribal liaison then looks into the federally recognized tribes that are within that transportation corridor, and because this section of work is within Trinity County, Trinity County has no federally recognized tribes. Therefore, there are no tribes to consult, because none of them are recognized by the federal government. So the tribes that we are asking them to consider consulting with are local tribes that are either state recognized or recognized within the county of Trinity as being people who are indigenous to this region.
Okay, so that makes sense, I think the piece I was missing is there are sections of this corridor that do have federally or state-recognized tribes, and those are the ones with whom the conversations have already taken place.
But in this particular section, there are none.
Got it, thanks, thank you Natalie, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
And my, my intent with this is, again, to the extent that we are working with the tribes to get better recognition and support for their interests, to the extent that we have that authority, then I would like to see us use that authority. So I'll entertain a motion to...
So aren't you pushing this forward, she's coming back?
Yeah, I, I guess that what we would do is be pushing this to the next meeting with an expectation that there would be conversation with tribal representatives federally or not federally recognized with expectation that their input would be reflected in the document.
So because we opened this item up, we would still want to get public comment and then have a motion to continue to the next meeting, that would be the Board's pleasure.
Okay, I think we did have public comment, so that's okay, keeping up. So yeah, yeah, I'll entertain, we do need a motion, so entertain a motion.
I would move, that we move this conversation to the next meeting where we will hear from Natalie and have that update to decide.
Have a second?
I will second that.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Luth Wiler?
Aye. So we will take a 10-minute break. Get back at 10:51. Get back at 10:51. Thank you. We're turning under public hearings. Grants 4.1 Conduct a public hearing to discuss the completion of a community development block grant, CDBG, income project that purchased an ambulance for Southern Trinity ambulance rescue. No fiscal impact. Did anyone have questions for our presenter? Okay, we will open for public.
So this is just a grant that Suzy Kokums had put in place in 2022. It went, the grant went straight to SAR, STAR, to help them purchase an ambulance for Southern Trinity County. They're very appreciative. She wasn't able to log on and make a comment, but wanted to really narrate her appreciative for purchasing of the ambulance, and all funds are spent on that purchase. They received it in November of 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Open for public comment online?
I have no raised hands.
In the room. Okay, we will entertain a motion. Or.
Close the public hearing.
Disclose the public hearing. I always get thrown off with those. Okay. We will close the public hearing for this matter. Move on to county matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Under Board of Supervisors 5.1 Discuss and give direction to Supervisor Cox as the county-designated RCRC representative the idea of pursuing an amendment to the California Constitution regarding the membership of senators and assembly members. No fiscal impact. Supervisor Frazier, did you want to present?
Okay. I brought this up at our last board meeting, I believe it was. An idea moving forward. It came up after we'd had the discussion of giving direction to our RCRC and NACO and CSAC members of what they want us to do. So this was something that I would I've been considering for quite a while. It's pretty simple, really, but probably not easy. So I just wanted the board to have a chance to weigh in, and then we can make a decision whether we want to ask Supervisor Cox to take this to RCRC or how we would proceed. So you guys have all received my proposal, so I'm open to questions and we'll go from there.
Any questions for Supervisor Frazier? I would just like if you, oh, go ahead.
I just want to have a solid understanding of of your reasoning. So your 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 ask is is that we would have a one senator from each county?
Correct, and that would be more, it's based more on our federal constitution, where we have equal representation in the Senate by each state, kind of the same concept, but as on a state level for each county to have equal representation, and then to increase the number of representatives also in the in the lower chamber to so that maintains the balance between the number of senators and Congressmen.
That seems fair. I know often, being from rural counties, sometimes the numbers always outweigh us in in our our voice.
Heidi, I'm sorry, let's just hold on for, it sounds like we're getting into comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we'll we'll get to that. I just want to make sure we have questions for Supervisor Frazier, then we'll take public comment and then come into that. Sorry.
Understood. No, understood. Sorry.
Okay, any other questions? That was going to be my question, just trying to make sure I understood where you were coming from, so that the objective was as clear as the words on the paper. Okay, with that, we'll go to public comment first online.
I have no raised hands.
In the room. Okay, now, I guess we should have a motion, and then we can get into discussion.
I guess if no one else would wants to make a motion, I'll move that we direct Supervisor Cox as our county designate designate to RCRC to take this to RC's RC and and ask them to promote it as a ballot initiative.
I will second that.
Okay, now, please continue with your conversation.
Was stating that oftentimes, because we are such a rural county, our numbers are limit to the amount of voice that we have. I have actually been told before by folks in positions that your votes are so limited, it's really no point in having this conversation with you. And so I I appreciate that you're trying to find some equality across the across the state. So it would be nice for us to be have equitable representation.
The, I I appreciate the balance that Supervisor Frazier is looking for and agree that it is more equitable. It definitely serves as, it would model after what we do federally, so that part makes sense. But the the piece I would offer the board for consideration is that RCRC, if if you haven't been in the room and aren't aware of what that looks like, and you have your 40 supervisors that are there as the designees, such as myself, and you have staff and you have a CEO in council, and so it's a, it's, we're the model of that. And they too have a strategic plan. And where we have said we are going to keep our boundaries, right, intact as we have adopted our strategic plan and not send our CAO all over the board, we're going to go in one direction forward. And they they are this way as well. And so I think that maybe an approach to this that might be advisable would be to have Supervisor Frazier reach out to different supervisors from our member counties and kind of research, is there an appetite for this? And and if he finds that there is, then not only would we have that information when we present, but we would present from a stronger position because we would already know kind of who is on board with that. Meanwhile, I can dig into that strategic plan and see if there's a a piece of it that this could tier into to support, that it does fit where we're headed. I could have done that before, and it didn't occur to me to research that for you ahead of time. But that's certainly, if you're going to do some research, so can I. And so I think that that might be, this is not going to be an instant, an instant fix. So taking a little bit of time, I think, to better position ourselves would be my recommendation.
And along those lines, do you, how do you see that going forward? Do you see the reach out to the our member counties and try to get more on board before we go, or would you like to try to schedule something so I could present to my idea to RCRC? Not as you, not you pushing it as Trinity County, but to have me go and say, okay, this is a thought, and then to see what the reaction is from RCRC. I just want to know how how the best or how you are envisioning this, because I I have no problem reaching out to other counties. I just would like to know how you and I can work together to get to the goal.
Yeah, I think the best way, and we do have presenters that come, and when something is elevated to the level that a presentation on the agenda is prudent for, you know, a direction that is, you know, we are headed. I could picture that happening, but I think that the first best step is conversation with the representative supervisors from our member counties.
And would that be the other RCRC designates? Are you saying, or just generally to supervisors in other rural counties?
I think it would probably be best to target that conversation through their delegate, not that you couldn't speak to others. I mean, we want to watch, I guess there's no Brown Act violation, if you independently speak with more than one, that's their conversation to guard. But you would have to, but then you have to look at, it would be you talking to each one of them, because, you know, we've got Brown Act guidelines to follow as well within our board, which Margaret, what are the numbers on that? There are 40, and so you just can't go over a
Majority.
A majority, so yeah, you're safe for a long time.
But yeah. Are you, do you have a competing motion that you would? are you, do you have a competing motion that you would care to make to try to spell that out and how that would work?
Um so sure, and it can just help me capture the language succinctly as I give a my best shot here, but the motion would be to have Supervisor Fraser reach out to um RCRC member counties independently to express his idea and the strengths behind it to ascertain whether or not there's an appetite from a majority of them. So that when, if such time, we bring this idea as Trinity's idea to RCRC for potential conversation and movement forward, we're certain we're presenting from a position of strength and um also not going outside of the constraints of, I'll check that independently. I guess that doesn't have to be part of the motion. It it, I would say that as you reach, stop the motion, as you reach out to them, that you're gonna find that out too. And so it would be best if I look into that before you start speaking with them, just so that you come fully prepared to the table with what you know, information they're gonna have as well. I think I finished my motion.
So um motion is to have Supervisor Fraser reach out to other RCRC supervisors and see if we can get a majority lead, majority support.
Agreed.
Oh, we need a second?
Yep.
I will second that.
Thank you.
For discussion, um I'm o- I'm okay with that, because I know this is a process. This is gonna be I I don't expect to change the constitution of California by November. Um so the the one thing I would request is that um you help me out with the contact list for the those folks that I need to reach out to at RCRC, and then uh I'll try to start working on that. And even if um even if it is not something that RCRC wants to move forward with, or if it's something that's not in their um strategic plan, it would be nice to have to know where we stand kind of with RCRC, and then possibly one of the reasons I wanna go to RCRC is because I know that there are people there that have knowledge on doing these kind of things that I don't personally have. So I wanna tap into that resource and uh how we get there irrelevant irrelevant to me. It's just that we get there.
Yeah, I just want us to go there poised from our best position of strength possible, and I think this is the best um path toward that end.
And when is the next RCRC meeting?
Um in oh, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Or not quite, I think it's the fourteenth. I have to check the calendar.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I I'm thinking what it sounds like we're trying to do is determine what level of interest and support there is in pursuing something like this, which can be done by individual outreach. But I guess I'm coming back to Supervisor Fraser's initial ask was if it was presented together that determination of interest and support at the RCRC meeting, it happens all at once. So is the idea that by his outreach individually, he can talk them through it and and garner support and build that versus if you just throw it out at them, they'll go, hmm, no, let's not bother.
And when those things come up, the way that it would work is I would reach out to their um essentially clerk, just to keep the analogy, so you can kind of picture how that works. Um I'll get put on an agenda. It comes up as a round robin discussion and they'll say Trinity, and I'll just have a few moments to share a bit and um and then it, and then it it's not even, you might get a supervisor or two that will um maybe just give you a little indication from across the room. Um at the next break, you know, someone they might approach, they may not. And and so ascertaining this way where we actually reach out, have that more in-depth conversation, you're just gonna get a better discussion, a better feel, and again, they'll be it's kind of Dan's opportunity to educate in a way in order to garner stronger support. Yeah, it's just more um just picturing how that's gonna go down. I think this is the best opportunity for success.
You wanna test the waters?
I do wanna test the waters, and I also want um I want them to Dan's gonna be able to have a conversation that's going to just be more than, well, I'm just gonna throw this idea out there. Here's some facts surrounding it, you know, what do you think? But no, you know, the discussion will be valuable, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And again, there are some enormously experienced supervisors um there that you're looking for process that they can help with and
The only um question I would have with your um motion, I guess, because I don't know that we really need to motion for me to do that, but would you include in that that dependent on what I find, if we could still have just direction from the board that if it looks like something that RCRC is interested in, then you would present?
Oh, most certainly.
So would you amend your?
Yes, I would add that to my motion. Would you add it to your second?
Yes.
Hey.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Hi.
Supervisor Fraser?
Hi.
Chairman Luwata?
Hi. Okay. The next item under county matters, cannabis, five point two, conduct an appeal hearing to uphold, modify, or overturn the planning commission's decision to deny the appeal of the director's decision to approve a commercial cannabis license, CCL seven seven one for one oh three eight one Ruth Xenia Road, Hetten Shaw, California. CCL applicant Severin Stoianov, Stoianov Smoking Green Valley LLC, appellant Philip Gilman, planning file P dash two three dash one nine. Uh fiscal impact unknown.
Good day, Chair Supervisors, Drew Plubani, Cannabis Division Director.
We could, we can barely hear you, if you can speak up a little bit, Drew.
Sure, I'll, is that, is that a better volume?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm just gonna go ahead and introduce the the project and give some some background context. On February sixth, the item was presented before you all and continued to a date uncertain. The primary request being that um the appendix C document be included for your review. Originally, the project was approved on June twenty third, twenty twenty three, and scheduled for license issuance on or after July twelfth. On July eleventh, twenty twenty three, an application for the appeal of the director's decision to approve CCL seven seven one was submitted to the community development department. And um following that, on October twelfth, twenty twenty three, the appeal, um which you you said, Rick, was planning project twenty three dash nineteen was heard by the planning commission and the appeal was denied. And then following that, on October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, an appeal of the planning commission's decision to the board of supervisors was received. So as I think many of you are aware, um in terms of the application process and the administrative processes associated with reviewing that application, one of the most significant elements is the appendix C environmental document, which um is reviewed both by the outside environmental consultants and by staff. And so within that document, um there is quite a lot of information, and I imagine that you all may have some questions for me, but just as a brief overview, um the the sort of the the four main reasons for appeal, a- as we've broken them down, are related to water, um buildings, fish, and the concerns of citizens. And so related to the regulatory requirements um regarding water, Water Board and CDFW um have regulatory oversight on on some of those components. Um the 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 sort of my take on the concerns with buildings, um I would say are generally and specifically addressed in the EIR. Um again, you know, the concerns about fish overlap with the concerns about water, and and those are both um sort of under the regulatory purview of CDFW and Water Board. And then the concerns of citizens are addressed, I would say primarily um in the statement of overriding considerations that was adopted along with the final EIR. I'll I'll just dive into a little bit more discussion about the appendix C document and the areas that pertain to hydrology and water quality. The project has submitted all the applicable documents that pertain to those resource categories and the supplemental documents um that were provided. And and you should be able to have seen them all in the appendix C document and along with some of the other attachments that are included in backup. But there's a biological reconnaissance survey, um there's a state water board, division of water rights, um right to divert and use water, there's the CDFW Lake and Street Bed Alteration Agreement. And so, you know, I would say through those regulatory requirements and through the evaluations and analysis performed um in reviewing the appendix C document, this project has been deemed to meet all applicable regulatory requirements. And as, you know, as a result of that, um the application was approved and then, you know, obviously subsequently appealed. And so that is why we have this item before you all today. I don't know if you have any specific clarifying or technical questions for me now, or at any point during the hearing. I'm happy to do my best to answer them.
Any questions from board members at this time?
Um, yeah, I guess um this would be probably, I don't know if it's for Drew, for council again. Um kind of the same question that I blew everything up with last time, uh hopefully we can get past it. Uh I would like to know what um we're considering, because if this is an appeal of the appendix C, or if it's the appeal of the issuance of the license, or is it both? And do they go together, or are they separate? Because um in the backup material, there are definite questions about the appendix C, then there are also concerns about issuance of the license on a separate level. So my question is, um are we here to determine if this board agrees that with the adoption of the appendix C, or are we here to determine whether or not we think the license should be issued? And I'd like to have some clarity on that question.
Do you wanna handle that, or do you want me to jump in?
Um if you feel clear on that, Margaret, feel free, um otherwise I can do my best to answer it.
I'm happy to let you go first, but um let me know.
Um I I would say that, you know, in our discussions with county council and our um, you know, Sequa attorney Derek Cole, it's been determined that essentially those are tied together. Um I I don't know if if that helps to answer your specific question, Dan, but I would say that is the way we're looking at it, and that is the reason that the appendix C has been included for your review.
And I would echo that. The the language of the appeal, although very broad, uh does touch on sequel-related items, specifically looking at the fish, um water usage, um fish in the creeks and other um impacts that would fall under sequo. So we're looking at this as a global analysis um to appeal and look at the entirety uh sequo and the underlying um issuance.
Okay. As far as to be clear.
Okay, any other questions at this point? Okay, we will hear from our appellant.
Okay, good morning, Chairman and board members. My name is Philip Gilman, and I'm speaking here on behalf of myself and the majority of Hetten Shaw. I have lived in Hetten Shaw my entire life, and the white side of my family has been there since the early eighteen sixties. And the native side has been there for generations before that. Over seventy percent of the residents and landowners of Hetton requested a denial of CCL seven seven one located in the middle of Arsenic Valley, including all surrounding parcels except Mountain Top LLC. I would also like to remind the board that this permit is in the area of a requested Hetten Shaw opt-out that was started in twenty twenty. I'm requesting denial of this license based on the appendix C, the project itself and other general concerns. First of all, since the last meeting, I have received a re-acted version of the appendix C, which was interestingly resubmitted in December twenty twenty three since my appeal to the board. I was unable to find any notice in the trendy journal from the end of November to the beginning of January that would show that it had been re-noticed. In reading through the document, I found several questionable statements in the mitigations portions. The air quality measure three point three dash two B says that all generators meet air quality standards. However, generators are not mentioned in the noise mitigation. Also of interest in the greenhouse gas emissions mitigation measures, three point eight dash one C, the power supply to this property and the project site are permanent connections to T the TPOD grid. In cultural resources discussion, page four to twenty six, it says the project site existed prior to this analysis. The first ground disturbance for development of the cannabis cultivation site occurred in approximately twenty twenty two. The last ground disturbance activities will also occur in twenty twenty two. With that, in their appendix C, what we see now is the complete project. There are several more half-truths, untruths, and inconsistencies throughout the document. Unfortunately, I don't have time to address every one of them now, though a document has been submitted to you addressing more. From my perspective, there are too many environmental issues for this location to be a viable growing operation. Water concerns are of that most importance to me and the folks living downstream that already must watch water consumption during the hot summer months. We rely on this stream, a tributary of the Van Duzen River for household water as well as water livestock. The overuse of water in this proposed location could put my cattle business as well as my neighbor's cattle businesses in jeopardy. The final EIR has listed Hetten Shaw as an identified low groundwater production area area. Thus, it is known that there are existing issues relating to groundwater availability. According to the Fish and Wildlife LSA, ten gallons a minute per from surface water for a total of fourteen thousand four hundred gallons per day. Forbearance period for pumping water from surface water is from April first to November fifteenth. For a typical growing season, June to October, this is our dry season. There will not be an abundance of surfaced water to draw from, and with an average of six gallons of water per day per plant, the proposed fifty seven thousand five hundred gallons of water storage will last approximately four days. In contrast, a herd of twenty five cattle uses approximately three hundred gallons of water per day. Are we to believe the applicant is going to stop using water or even limit to what is available? Listed in the mitigations as a portion of the proposed plan is a one million gallon pond. However, there is no mention of the environmental impact a pond like this would have, or how they plan to make it. Dig down, push up, haul in dirt and materials. All will cause ground disturbance and potentially bring in invasive species and mosquitoes drawn to a body of standing water. The appendixy did not address the issue of the ketten lily. A plant traditionally used by Native Americans as a food source. This wetland area. Is a historical and cultural site. Another applicant south of this was denied a license due. To the proposed well was going to dry the cotton field adjacent to the. Proposed grow. No native, no native monitor was involved in the process for this applicant. Recently, the applicant and his consultant requested the tribe to come to the site and see. The site and the ground disturbances. Some of those decisions are addressed in the. Attachments on the agenda. An archaeological report was done. That indeed found two cultural sites on the property besides the ketten lily. At the time of the archaeological report. Concerned citizens of sins were not consulted during the project review. The project was defined as only having one twenty five hundred gallon. Tank of storage and one well for domestic and agricultural use. The agent for this project. Defined it as a sequel. With concrete sides and a storage of fifty seven thousand five hundred gallons of water. Also recently. That owner drained and moved nine of his tanks with only this month to get the water storage complete. The property is surrounded by Class One tributary of the Van Duzen River. According to NAIP DOQ map appendix three, which. Were incorrectly labeled as Class Two on the flora photo. Both have water drunk. Both will have water drawn from them if approved. Both are also fish burying creeks. Waterways as well as the main water source for livestock for several people. Photo number two shows pumping water directly from the creek. On May seventeenth, twenty twenty three, outside the forbearance period. At this time, no one was living in the house, so it can be. Supposed that the water was not strictly for household use. As shown by pictures in the archaeology report on the flower photo, photo number one, the applicant was supposed to put. A water line around the wet area. Photos three, four, and five shows the water line going directly through the wetland. Photos six, seven, and eight shows the water line entering the ditch of County Road five oh two. And using the DOT culvert to cross. County Road five oh two. And exiting into the proposed growth site. According to Trinity County DOT, it is a violation to run. The water line in in ditches and across roads in DOT culverts. Again, the project has changed and has already violated. Items listed in the archaeology report. Making the appendixy invalid. The archaeology report stated that two cultural sites were. To be fenced before any work was to be done. Instead, there's now a trench through one of these sites. This project not only violates sequoia and cultural protections, it does not fit our neighborhood. The proposed site. Is right in the middle of the main section of the valley and approximately. In approximately a hundred and fifty years of white settlement in the valley. No one has built or grown on the grout valley floor. It is historically for grazing livestock. All homes and gardens are built on the edges of the valley. Or on hills and ridges. This proposal allows a large. Eyesore right in the midst of our cotton fields that draw tourists and tribal members during the blooming season. To take photos and revisit tribal areas. The smell also is a great concern for many, especially many of our elders are allergic to marijuana smell. I would like to draw your attention to the number of letters and signatures you have received. With concerns for our neighborhood and community. This project does not fit in our valley. Other concerns about this project include the fact that the appealing. The applicant does not have. Even does not even live in the valley. He has several grows and properties in Humboldt Mendocino counties. And has an address in Nevada. This does not pose well for the accountability and following the rules. What on? On one occasion, when the applicant spoke to me. He. Expressed his desire to sell, but without a license, he would not be able to recruit his investment. It seems he is seeking a license so he could then sell the property. This shows me that he is not dedicated to this project and does not necessarily need it. I understand that issuing a license is a discretionary action, giving you and the other. Director the freedom to decide what should be done in a particular situation. Please consider that not every license needs approved. And not all places in Trinity County are prime growing areas. Seventy five percent of the households of the area of Hetten Shaw. Are requesting a not opt out, and these partials especially are not ideal for growing. Too many concerns. And livelihoods and lifestyles are at stake. Please deny. CCL dash seven seven one.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ashley, I think I record that at like two minutes, so we'll allow an extra two minutes to the other side, if you will.
Oh, okay.
All right.
And Chair, may I just quick one thing before we move on? Um, just in response to Dan's answer, I I I should have phrased that it is. Staff's and council's opinion that we should do a sequoia analysis. The board does have the authority to determine that. The appeal did not contain enough language to trigger a secret review. Um, it was very broad. It talked about impacts of water usage. Um, and the creeks generally. So that's ultimately your decision as part of your finding, but it's our recommendation that we do if we. Even if you find. Um, that it does not meet the standard to trigger a secret review, that we still make findings uh that as if it did, just to protect ourselves, we're to go on appeal.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Hear from the other. Side. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Belanco. I am uh. The spokesperson, I suppose, for the licensee and. Appellie in this case, and um. I think if it's appropriate, and I I know you mentioned the extra two minutes, if I could reserve those for. After public comment to. Respond if if there's any point for that. Otherwise, I'll try and keep mine uh. Even under the ten minutes. Uh. There are many times I think that I uh. I don't want to be you in this circumstance. Um, this is one of those times I don't really even want to be me. I had occasion with the consultant with the licensee to visit uh the community. Take a tour of the property, look at uh the archaeological resource site. We met many of the neighbors. Very nice people. I mean, this is the epitome of what uh uh makes Trinity County a special place. So i- it's certainly not mine nor the licensee's intention to offend the neighbors. At the same time. This project is what the law allows. It has been evaluated. It does meet the criteria. The license was issued and it's an appropriate license. Uh, I think there's a lot of confusion, as often there is, about. What licensing conditions are, what factors are protected? I'll start with water because that's a universal aspect. This water. Diversion. Is permitted, is registered. Um. The forbearance period. Doesn't allow for pumping during the dry season. That's that's part of why it is. Every other water user in the valley uh. Can pump. And use water during the wet season, or I don't, that's not just Hetten Shaw Valley, that's the entire state. Cannabis growers cannot uh. Absent the extraordinarily rarest circumstance. A cannabis grower cannot use surface water during the dry season. That is certainly the case here. Uh. Now, when anybody brings up water concerns and cannabis, uh. My first reaction, I suggest it to staff and the board, um, which. Since there were no disclosures, I'm sure there was no ex parte communication or evidence. That anybody encountered, but I always go to. The Water Board Resource E RIMS. It's E W R I M S. It is a map, and it shows you where all the water rights are and everybody who's submitting. A statement of diversion and use if they're using surface water. You can always find the cannabis grows in your neighborhood because. They're guaranteed to be on that map because you can't get a license without saying that. Now, I printed out a copy. Of the Hetten Shaw Valley E RIMS map for everybody, but. Remarkably, my truck was stolen. So you know, times are getting tough when somebody takes my truck. Uh, I'm confident I'll get it back, but in it were those maps. Uh. However, I did pull up the map here. It's a real time map. Um. You can find it. And. This solitary green dot in the center of the Hetten Shaw Valley is a licensee. Nobody else around there is reporting their water uses. I'm sure most of these water rights are pre nineteen fourteen. Not disputing that those water rights are there. However. Anybody with a using surface water is supposed to file a statement of diversion and use. So that the state agencies who have jurisdiction over water. Have a picture of how much water is being taken out of the system in each area. So they can make protective allowances. Hey, we're going to dry out this wetland because there's been a hundred thousand gallons taken out this August. That's part of how the system works. I understand how Trinity County works. And and that is how it is. However, to say, oh, somebody's threatening my water use, well. You got to be out front with your water use too. Um. I do think there are protections built into the licensing. Particularly through the forbearance period. The pond is a factor of the forbearance period. I'm certain uh. This licensee, like every other one, would rather pump during the wet season, but the law doesn't allow that, so we have to have other mechanisms. There's the option of the Fukushima tank field, you know, having. Fifty or a hundred water tanks stacked up, or there's ponds. Um. This land is conducive to a pond. It's flat. It's easy to do. Those ponds have to be engineered. Uh, and and they have to be appropriately built. So. As regards the water. This is within. What is considered uh the regulatory parameters. So. I'm going to move along from water into uh. The cultural tribal archaeological considerations. Uh, and and one major consideration is the sites that were identified in the Chris. Or excuse me, in the survey by the archaeologists were. Identified as archaeological sites, and that. Hate to sound like a lawyer here, but that is a distinction from a cultural or tribal cultural site. Archaeological sites. Are a- and what this site is, is church chips and some tools perhaps were identified. Uh, sequoia. Would refer to this and and sequoia section twenty one zero eight three point two, which is archaeological resources. Determination of effective project. Uh, and mitigation measures. That would identify this, these sites as non-unique archaeological resources. That does not mean they don't have value. That doesn't mean they're worth, not worth protecting. It does mean that the law says. These are not unique. The fact is virtually every piece of ground. On this continent, certainly in California, has been inhabited by people before us. And in many cases, they left evidence of their habitation. This is one of those sites. Uh. Sequo says. If you have a non-unique archaeological site, there is no mitigation necessary. In this case, the licensee. Opted to flag the area, avoid the area. He's not trying to disturb any archaeological resources. If some. Day later, they are. Elevated to tribal cultural resources. It certainly isn't. Open to communication and working. To ensure that the sites remain undisturbed. He's not looking to disturb the sites. Uh. But the law provides what you have to do, and he he's gone beyond what is required by sequoia. As regards Hetton, um. I had never heard of the plant. Hetton before. Uh. I was. Amazed and delighted to learn Hetton is what. When I was a tribal attorney on Pine Ridge. Was referred to there as Bannock. Um. My ancestors are uh are Romans, so I'm going to use the Latin phrase. It's called camus uh under its. Um, genus and species designation. Extraordinarily important plant. In Western North America. I I cannot overestimate the importance of this plant. Now, a- as I explained to some of the tribal monitors that were there, what is actually more endangered than this plant, which is not endangered. Is the knowledge of this plant. Uh. Back on Pine Ridge and amongst many of the other communities, they knew this plant existed. None of them knew how to identify or what it was or how to use it. Uh, this was a staple food product that has been replaced in the reservation era with fry bread. Um, this is a nutritious, fibrous, low sugar plant uh that was used as a. Kind of a staple food that could. Fit any other foods in with it. It was like the uh, the primary. Bread, if you will, even though it's not really a bread. Uh. When tribes were relegated to reservations, this was changed into the exact opposite. Uh, zero fiber, high sugar. Bad fat, no mineral content fry bread. Uh, that wreaks havoc on. The health of many of these communities. I'm and and the. Licensee and the consultant, everybody has talked about this, are very much in favor of bringing the knowledge about uh camus. Ketten to the forefront, and I think that we should. Uh, however, it is not an endangered plant. Um, it is not anywhere in our EIR. I I believe we should do something to acknowledge this knowledge. And spread that around because it's valuable. However. He's not unnoticed. It's not in our EIR. There's no mitigation available for camus. Again. He moved his water line. He has no intention of disturbing the wetland where it grows. Uh. You know, there is. A bit of irony that uh. You know, they say uh. In West Point, they had a saying in our history department that uh much of the history we teach was made by people we taught. Um, class of eighteen fifty four, Oliver Otis Howard uh. Was a general in the Civil War, um, with the first head of the Freemans Bureau. Um. Very much in favor of. Teaching, educating former slaves. Evidenced by the college that still bears his name. If the story ended there, great, what a great hero. Uh, but unfortunately. After that, he went out to. The Columbia Division and was responsible for some of the last uh campaigns. If what, depending on our perspective, is called either the Indian Wars or the American genocide. Amongst those Inez per se uh and a battle uh campaign. Called the Bannock War that took militia troops from as far away as Crescent City, California. To contain a tribe in southern Idaho that was removed from its camus grounds. Uh, their complaint. All these uh. Settlers are bringing cattle to trample and eat our ketten. Um, uh, excuse me, our Bannock. But that brings me back to the ketten and the Hetton. This is cattle ranching area. We've already, to a certain extent, disregarded Hetton there. I think we should do something about it. The licensee thinks we should do something about it, but denying this license isn't that. So I would urge that we uphold the director's decision, maintain this license, let us continue to work to allay some of the concerns here. I think they're valid, but not as regards this license. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions for the presenters before we move to a public comment?
Just for the record, before we get started, because we did have more mention of ex parte communication, I disclosed the first time we heard this that Mr. Gilman had come to me to ask what to do about this, and I directed him in the way of how you appeal. Beyond that, any communication that I've received from folks from Hetten Shaw, I have been very clear that I don't want to hear from them personally. I want them to send their stuff either to Ashley, the clerk of the board, so it gets distributed to all the supervisors, or to send it to all the supervisors. So I'm not meeting with these people personally, even though I do see them all on a regular basis. I have made it quite a point not to talk about this particular thing.
Thank you. Any other questions that we might have for these folks that are presenting to us? Okay, let's go to public comment. Any online?
I have no ears yet.
Okay, please.
Hi, I'm Tracy Foster Olso, the Cultural Resource Officer for the Narama Gwinntu Tribe. I was very thankful and pleased that we finally had a boots on the ground, if you will, out there at this parcel. There were several things that were done the night before, like ripping out water lines, left open trench, things that had been argued that didn't exist, couldn't be proven, and so on. Seven water tanks, 2,500-gallon water tanks were rolled off to the side from the site, which, in actuality, once we started talking and actually collaborating together, which again, we're very thankful for, we all came up with a compromise in that putting those tanks back up where they were with the least disturbance, kind of capping that culturally sensitive area, was agreed upon. I felt very confused as to why these things happened the evening before, disconnecting water lines, going under the county road over to the grow area. It just, it was a little unnerving. But we had the archaeologists out there that surveyed, did the original CEQA report, archaeological report for this, and he, along with myself, we pinned off the most sensitive areas that they identified in their March 2020 survey. We made plans for signs for no ground disruption in the area. I still, if that water line is going in, there are metal irrigation pipes that I would prefer be on the surface rather than digging through that area. They did agree to go out of the marsh area where the camus, the ketin, is growing. But, and that's where the trench was formerly dug. However, they did agree to go along the access road and to the side of it. So I want to be present when these things are taking place that are going to be installed, if you will. And property owner was very cooperative, and I think all in all, it was a great meeting. Again, we appreciate everybody going out there. But if these compliance things are not followed and things are not disturbed, sorry, if the compliance issues are not resolved, then I am in favor of it being appealed. But if we can go as planned the other day when we were in the field, then I'm on board with that in regards to keeping them in compliance and oversight by the county during their licensure period, and that's for all cannabis grows.
Thank you. Next?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm going to apologize right off the spot. I didn't intend to come here slightly angry, but I don't particularly enjoy being lectured about California genocide when my family were direct descendants and survivors of the genocide in Northern California, including the natural land bridge. But as cultural oversight and archaeological oversight, I can tell you the piece of property he's trying to go through is probably one of the most archeologically loaded piece of ground in Trinity County short of the natural land bridge. It is culturally, one of the most culturally sensitive grounds. It is the site that all the neighboring tribes would come meet every spring before the spring salmon runs because they were starving to death and they could eat the camus lilies. The ovens were on that property right beside where he wants to put the tanks, to cross the marsh area and the camus lily. I'm not particularly worried about the camus lily. You can't hardly get rid of that stuff. We've been trying since 1847. The bigger problems are, is the arch, you will, the entire three knolls that he's going to be crossing is an archaeological site. Where he wants to build his greenhouses is an archaeological site. Also is in a wetlands and is below the flood plain, which means I will have to deal with what washes out of that every winter. It comes onto my property. And if this goes through, whatever he does there should be done with cultural oversight. I'm really not particularly impressed with this process because no one made an effort to contact the native groups. And there are tribal ground and federally recognized natives in Trinity County, and we were not contacted. As his next-door neighbor, I'm sad to say I've never met him before. He did not talk to the neighbors about it. He didn't find out what actually was going on there. And it's, there's one more thing. I got 12 seconds to say. There's another plant there that's easy to look up. It's called the Lassen Lupin. That rocky knoll has Lassen Lupin in it. In 2018, there was only 13 plants left of Lassen Lupin, and they are there. So I would really wish you would consider not allowing this grow. It's in a completely inappropriate place, and thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you. Next?
Board chair, members of the board, and I'm rooting for a victorious outcome for the incumbents today. But I'm lost on no one in this room of the countless meetings, the innumerable hours, the strain on staff, and the drain on county resources consumed on this topic. And this appeal today represents a significant investment of personal finance, time, effort, sacrifice, and it's more than a policy debate. It's a quality of life issue. And I trust this board will understand, or well understands, the often frustrating challenge of creating solution to local issues impacted by distant and often disconnected policy mandates or previous board actions. Time does not allow less of general, but no longer hypothetical, but qualifiable adverse impacts of cannabis on our county and its residents. From the numerous nuisances to violent crime. But this project specifically, and my other letter mentioned, doesn't fit the history, the heritage or culture of our community goes far beyond indigenous archaeology. And though we share in common a care for the land, the landscape, and community, past, present, and future. And from just a simple land use planning perspective, this project is patently wrong. Location, location, location. To the outsider, it may appear to be the middle of nowhere. To residents, it's the center of everywhere. The center of our valley would equate to downtown both sides of the Main Street. Totally inappropriate. And today, beyond a legal argument or quibble about paperwork or process, I offer impassioned plea that an individual not be permitted to adversely impact an entire community every day and for generations to come. And as the green rush continues to wane, that we not be left with yet another blight on the land and the landscape. Please revoke the permit. Uphold the appeal. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room?
Chair Luke Wiler, Supervisor Lisa Wright from Lewiston. One of the things that's really great about California is the, great and bad for some, is the extensive environmental oversight that's imposed on cannabis farmers. Heard a lot of claims without any really factual evidence that somehow this process hasn't been followed. This has been through all the departments review, in addition to the director, which includes county council. Extensive discussion was denied at the Planning Commission, and we ask that you continue to deny it today. There's some confusion regarding, I think, surface water and groundwater. Surface water, as Mr. Blanco explained, you know, that comes from, that's considered waters of the state. It's under state jurisdiction. It's an allowable use for cannabis, but not during the forbearance period. Thus, the need for the storage tanks and the projected project element that includes a future rain catchment. Now, rain is not regulated by any agencies, so there is no additional oversight to the rain catchment once that's been developed and is approved as a project element. Regarding cultural, archaeological, some interesting claims made, again, no basis in fact. I will mention that a Chris search was conducted in, let's see, in February 2020 that found no cultural resources within a quarter mile, recorded cultural resources. One of the things I said on site this last week with some of the cultural monitors is if there are indeed other archaeological significant sites, you really need to see about an entire survey of the valley because you need to record these to protect them. Otherwise, there are no protections. And if there is no permit, there are no protections. This is what people seem to fail to understand is that cannabis is so highly regulated. That's where you get your protections. If that permit is not there, those cultural areas do not need to be protected. There's just nothing in law that requires that. So what happened was around November, December, we found out, Flora, who prepared his environmental documents, that there had been additional archaeological study done in March of 2020, right during COVID. That document did not come to us when we did the Chris search because we did it beforehand. And when that was discovered, we immediately updated the document and actually worked with staff to add mitigation measures beyond what's required in the EIR. That's what led to the subsequent inspection the other day. And there was some confusion over whether there should be in the area of the resource if they should remove the water tanks or leave them. So that's what led to the removal of them as a protection measure, when in fact, when we got on site, it was agreed to that it would be best to leave those capped. The ketin is not a special status species, a plant species under California law, nor is it a recordable cultural resource. So in fact, the bio, as well as the cultural, found that there are really no native plants left due to extensive cattle grazing. So they're really just non-native plants. A wetland delineation was analyzed in the biological assessment and found that those areas that they're claiming are all wetlands are not, were not found by Abaha just to be that. The applicant has agreed to avoid the area of ketin, which appears to be a marshy area, although not a wetland delineated area, and has no problem with that. In fact, we encouraged them to perhaps work with the tribal ad hoc to set up a ketin restoration program for all the valley, not to, you know, just to single out the cannabis farmer. There's an acre of approved licensing in Hetten Shaw Valley currently. There is also another approved 10,000 square feet. So to somehow make this as a unique, you know, threat to the heritage and livelihood, it just doesn't really track kind of with reality. But the applicant is absolutely more than happy to respect the interests of the cultural monitors, the protection of the cultural resources. I had shared in the backup with you what the resolution was to put some parking stops, to put the tanks back there, to run the water lines. They're in the process of going through an encroachment permit. There are not water lines currently running through the county culverts. They have not cultivated. This is not a legacy cultivation site. So it's all brand, it's all brand new. So I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you may have regarding the CEQA document in particular. I don't feel that the original application for the appeal rises to the level of questioning that CEQA document. That's certainly up to you, but I believe that we can counter all of their concerns with the appropriate mitigation measures that might be in place or with the appropriate findings of the scientific documents that were prepared to support the appendix C. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, in the back row, I don't think we captured your name for the record. Would you mind sharing that?
Mike Fraser.
Thank you, sir. That's quite all right. Any other public comment?
Suzy Torby from Hetton. Couple things just right off the top of my head. The history of the ketin that was shared prior is not accurate. Not even going to go into that, but it's absolutely not accurate. I reviewed the appendix C. I read all 297 pages and crossed it with the draft EIR and the EIR and all that. I found several discrepancies and some inaccuracies. Even if we put all the portions regarding cultural area and the stream classifications, and they're not considered as discrepancies. They're not something that we can bring up. There's still some pretty obvious mitigations, like the property being connected to T-PUD. That's not true, nor is it going to be true. The fact that all ground disturbance is done as of 2022? Good, we're done. I'm also concerned with the pond. It just keeps being thrown out there as mitigation for the water issue, but there's nothing about its engineering process, how it's going to be put in. how it's going to be put in, the environmental impact of bringing in or taking out that much soil. I especially, okay. I think these issues show that the process and the document were not reviewed that carefully. The keton, you guys know how important that is to us. We protect that. We're, Hetton is barely known in Trinity County, let alone in Chris or anything else. History, we've protected our land, we've protected our area. The fact that it's not there doesn't diminish the fact that it does exist, and it doesn't exist in very many locations. Hetton Valley was actually named for the keton, as was Ketton Palm. The other sites that she mentioned, though not appreciated, are still not in the middle of our valley. This one, we would literally have to drive through the middle of every time we come or go. My grandchildren cannot go from my house to my mom's house without driving through marijuana. Again, over 75% of the landowners do not appreciate this and do not want it. And I really hope that you, our Board of Supervisors, can put people over profit. Thank you.
I apologize, I forgot to hand out these. These are letters of support from residents in the county. There's over 11 people that have supported the project. Sorry for not giving those to you at the onset.
Thank you. Lori?
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Lori Wills from Lewiston. There's a few things that I made some sloppy notes about sitting here listening to the previous speakers. And having a lot of appeal experience in Lewiston, they're just raising some red flags for me that I want to throw out there for you to consider, please. Number one, I heard that the appendix C was modified just recently in December after the appeal was filed. And we had an appeal in Lewiston where an appendix C was modified like three or four times after our appeal. So to me, that's a red flag. Why is that happening? Why does that continue to happen? And staff and the consultants will say that's part of the process. But if this is in fact a quasi judicial hearing, why is the record that's being appealed being modified after the fact? I don't understand that. So second, I also heard that these appellants encountered delays getting the appendix C. We did as well. So I feel that's just an ongoing problem.
I'm sorry, point of order. I'm distracted by passing of papers and missed about three sentences, and I don't think that's fair to her or to me. So I'm not sure how to let her back up with time, but I don't appreciate the interruption.
Thank you.
Add 30 seconds when we get there. So please, if you would mind going back just a few sentences there.
You can go back to the part about a quasi judicial situation here.
Well, these hearings are quasi judicial hearings. So I don't understand why the record itself that's being appealed is allowed to be modified after the appeal is filed. And to me, it gives the appearance that staff or the consultants are trying to negate the reasons for the appeal or correct. Then, secondly, the delays, this seems to be an ongoing issue that appellants can't seem to get the records they need. Also, when it comes to the appendix C, if I recall at a previous hearing, point was raised that the planning commission never even had the appendix C when they made their decisions. Also, and I may be wrong, I'm assuming on this, but it sounds based on some of the speakers that the site may have been modified. And there is a form in the application packet that the applicant signs that they can't modify the site until a license is issued. So I would ask you to look into that further. And finally, the other biggest concern I have is this is a pending opt-out area. And it's just this constant, what came first, the chicken or the egg? And this is just another example of that and how frustrating it is for all of us to not have these opt-outs addressed when possible licenses are getting permitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Just, I think that the applicant is on Zoom and wanted to speak.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to represent myself. I'm Severin Stoyanov. I'm the owner of the property, which is all about. I just wanted to say I'm an American citizen and I'm living in the in there from 12 years, and I respect all the residents there. I have a lot of friends over there. So I've just been following the rules and the laws of California and the county to do that business and to be allowed to do it. And I've been cooperated in any way, you know, like so. I just wanted to say all that and represent myself. I did get in touch with the neighbors, not with all of them. But I tried, you know, to to talk to everybody about this. But I'm not the only one in the valley with the license. So I'm just trying to figure out, is that directly to me or, you know, what's, what is the issue? Because if it's not marijuana licensed, I have to feed my family. I have two kids, and I'm gonna grow something else. And there is no regulations for other agricultures like marijuana is regulated. This is what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a public comment.
Okay.
Chris? Chris?
We can't hear you, Chris, if you're still there.
Kay Bell?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Crystal Bell from Lewiston. I also wanted to reiterate what Lori Wills brought up. And I find it to be the most concerning aspect of this whole process, which is what we actually went through as well with CCL 132's appeal. And that is the record being modified after the appeal has been filed. In our case, it was three or four times that that appendix C was resubmitted without any type of notification to the appellants that that new information was present. And during this process, ours was denied. It was made moot, et cetera. And, you know, I listened to these people saying that they've read 297 pages of the appendix C and cross-referenced it to the EIR doing all their due diligence, then to find out that all of a sudden, the appendix C has changed. And that appendix C was never made part of the record for the planning commissioner to make their decision as well. And I think there's a question of fairness and legality when we're, we're, you know, dealing with these types of appeals and this type of presentation of information. So I really would like you to have some good consideration over that that topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Can you, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, thank goodness. Okay. Chris Williams, Weaverville. So I know this farmer, I know this farm's location. It's in a location where there's other agricultural activities. His neighbors have written letters of support. And when this farm is active, it'll only have 10,000 square feet of plant canopy. 1,000 square feet, that's it. So to render a decision on this appeal, you must ask yourself, is this site in compliance with our local ordinance? Yes, it is. Is this farm in compliance with the water board? Yes, it is. Is this farm in compliance with fish and wildlife? Yes, it is. Is this farm in compliance with SEQA? Yes, it is. This farm has an active state license? And I urge that you can't consider future ordinances that haven't been written. You have to look at what we have in the here and now. This is a good actor in terms of cannabis farmers. He's done everything that he needs to do. And so you must deny this appeal. There's no facts of finding. This is once again just transparent nimbism. Thank you very much.
I have no other raised hands.
Okay. With that, we will close public comment, move into board discussion. Did anybody have any questions that they wanted to ask based on that before we move into motions and discussion?
If, I guess I would direct them at either Ed or Drew. I guess a couple of questions, some clarity. Concerns were raised about, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, Ed, because you're here. So questions were raised about the pond that was referenced as a mitigation measure and why it wasn't included in the appendix C for analysis. Can you speak to that? Okay, Drew?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me well enough?
Yes.
So the pond is included on the site plan. And as a proposed activity, I do believe that a grading permit would be required prior to engaging in those sorts of development activities. So the statement that it was not included, I believe, is incorrect. I don't know if that clarifies or answers your question, Dan?
Oh, I understand that the pond was included on the site plan, but it wasn't. There are, there was no analysis done on the possible effects that the pond could have under SEQA. And I'm wondering if there's, I just want to know if that's common or or not. I know in the past, we've had proposed ponds, and I'm going way back here, when I was on the planning commission, that actually the pond itself had mitigation measures of mosquito fish and ramps for wildlife to be able to get out and all that that were incorporated in the, and that was pre-app appendix C. That was, I think they did an ISMND. So, but all of those were analyzed as part of the environmental analysis of the project as a whole. So I'm just wondering, are we capturing those things in the grading permit process? Are, I want to understand how the difference between past practice and now practice. Okay, I guess would be my question.
Yeah, I do believe that most of that would be addressed, you know, through the mitigation measures in the final EIR and then potentially as well in the grading permit process.
Okay, and I think that's all I have for technical questions now. Oh. Yeah, for now, there'll be more later.
Okay. I do want to follow up on your question, though, because I'm hearing that it can be affect, can be looked at through the grading plan. And I heard, just heard final EIR. I guess I come back to the question, if that was part of the plan, should it have been considered in the SEQA analysis? I know it wasn't, but should it have been? Drew?
Well, I would say that, you know, going forward, we could certainly look into creating, you know, a more robust review for specifically rainwater catchment ponds. But currently, we've, you know, we've complied with the EIR in terms of the evaluations for that project.
Drew, is the pond not part of the project? And so if the pond is part of the project, but it's, we're, we haven't even, it seems like there are pieces of the implementation of the pond that haven't been looked at. For example, was the grading permit something that the applicant has already been advised he's going to need? Or are we just hoping he's going to think of that at the time?
I think it's something that could be addressed, you know, through conditions of approval at license issuance. But because it's a proposed element, I would say that there's no, you know, in terms of just broadly looking at cannabis cultivation license sites and, you know, proposed development, there's no guarantee that that proposed development will ever occur.
Okay, so help me out a little bit better because, or more so, I thought that the pond was the means by which the water captured when we were not in the forbearance period was going to then be utilized for the project.
So the the pond specifically as proposed is proposed as a rainwater catchment pond. So the, I guess in theory, there could be, you know, of that 50,000, approximately 50,000 gallons that they have the water rights to divert and use for cannabis, that water could be held in, you know, an above-ground pond construction. But that, the the water source for that pond would be surface flow from rainwater. So they're somewhat unrelated.
Okay, I want to come back, county counsel and or Drew. There was this follow-up statement that said staff recommended something about the SEQA documents, analysis, review, whatever. And there was a desire for us to include something in whatever decision we made. I'd just like you to restate that and the reasons for it.
Thank you. So in reviewing it and determining whether this meets the standard to be an appeal on the SEQA-related issues, we looked at the specific language that was provided by the appellant in this matter. Based on the fact that it was very broad and didn't specifically state that it was appealing SEQA-related issues, we are making a recommendation that in addition to making a determination, if you believe it meets the minimum standard to be in a SEQA appeal, in addition, that you go further and do an analysis on the SEQA just so that our findings have both. So it would be whether or not it met the minimum standard to hit a SEQA appeal. And then regardless, an analysis on SEQA. Again, we're looking to just protect the county going forward. In, and the law on this is very, it defers to the board in terms of making that determination and is not as finite as we'd like. It doesn't specifically say you have to say these words in order to be considered an appeal. It's just a judicial standard, looking at whether the board analyzed, whether it said the specific language. If they failed to make a request to review SEQA, the issue would be moot, moot, and you wouldn't have the ability to render a decision based on that. Because they have to specifically state what they intend to appeal.
I just heard two different things. I heard that because they were, language was vague, it could be included. And then I thought I heard at the end as because they didn't specifically state it, then it isn't included.
If you make the determination that it wasn't stated in a clear enough manner to trigger a SEQA analysis, then it would not be considered.
Okay, so it's basically a board interpretation as to whether it should be considered or not. And and then a review would take place if we felt that it should.
Correct. And our recommendation is that you you render that decision first, whether you feel it meets the standard to trigger a SEQA review. Our recommendation is regardless is to do a SEQA review so that we have a double layer of protection.
Okay, and can someone explain what a review of that document means?
So we, what we would do is we would look specifically at the language that the appellant provided and determine whether it is sufficiently clear enough that a, the applicant is asking for a SEQA review. Staff reviewed it, and we pulled out some language that is for you to analyze. But the the specific one- But the, the, the specific ones, as they did say, impact of water usage and buildings and fish in both creeks and the impacts on local citizens. So you have to make a determination whether that is sufficient to trigger a SEQA review.
Okay. And the SEQA review would be what? Because I'm assuming a SEQA review already took place.
Correct. So then if you determine that's enough to trigger a SEQA review, you would look at and determine whether there was any uh specific violations or errors in the SEQA documents that were provided. The, the staff has reviewed it as well, and our recommendation is we don't find any SEQA errors, but it's the board's pleasure how they want to analyze it based on public comments in the documents before you.
And so the review that you're talking that could happen would be the board's review of it, not back to staff, because staff has already looked and said, we think it's fine.
Correct. You're now hearing the appeal on it there. If, if you believe there's enough to go forward on it, you can make the determination of how you want to review, you review it as an independent board.
Okay, so one item is should it or should not be included? And if so, if yes, then we should consider that and give whatever readout we want on that. Then make a, a decision on the actual appeal that either does or does not include it.
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
I think I got there.
And in that scenario, the board ends up being SEQA experts?
No, but we are the final word on SEQA in Trinity County.
Correct. And, and you have staff to rely on. So if you have any questions, you have Drew on the, available to answer any questions.
Uh, and then a follow-up question for you, Drew. I understand that, you know, we're always finding ways that we can improve our processes, and I think that's great. Continuous improvement should be the case for all of us. What strikes me with this, um, not being that familiar with SEQA documents and appendixes and so forth in detail is when I think about what takes place in creation or implementation of this site plan, the creation of a hundred by hundred foot retention pond seems to be one of the bigger environmental impacts. I, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what in, environmental impact it has, but it is very impactful to create that size of a structure. And so for it not to be part of the SEQA study, I, I just don't understand why that would not be. So if the, again, I hear you saying we can go forward, we can modify, we can make sure it is. I'm trying to understand the logic and reasoning and findings that says we have it in the past and here's why.
So, yeah, there, there's a lot there. Um, and I'll, I'll do my best to, to kind of walk us through, you know, an, an overview of it. But specifically to, you know, this particular project um in 3.31B, their mitigation measures are scoped into the development for dust and pond development. And then if you actually go through um the appendixy document itself, and even just do a word search for pond, there's 45 references to, to ponds and the applicable regulatory requirements um related to construction, you know, uh, western pond turtles. There's really quite a lot there that generally is reviewed related to ponds for cannabis cultivation. I don't know if you'd like me to speak more to that, or if, if that reasonably answers your question.
Well, I, I think I'll leave it for now. I think it's, it still does, does leave questions in my mind about, you know, it's, when you think about those documents and having read through this one, um, it gets down to a very finite level on, on a bunch of things. And yet doesn't consider digging a hundred by hundred foot hole. So.
Again, I, I would just point out that it, it does very much cover those activities in terms of the broad review that is done for any of these projects, the EIR and the specific appendixy document. There are, you know, again, 45 references specific to ponds and the various regulatory agencies' requirements related to development, pre-construction surveys, et cetera.
Okay. Did you have something else?
No, not, not right this second.
Okay.
I'm actually maybe one for council again, because you said you wanted us to, I'm going back to my original question here. Um, you want us to determine if there's going to be a SEQA component? But if we determine that there is no SEQA component, and we have that motion, we also still have the component of issuance of license and planning, well, the planning commissions or the director's decision, whichever one we're appealing at this point, I think it's the planning commission. So um, do we need to make a motion that calls both of those out, saying that we that there are ground, that the appeal covers both? Or do we make a motion that we think it does or does not encompass SEQA? Um, that's, I don't want to end up having a motion, something that gets passed, and then we only do half the story.
We are asking it to be all part of one finding. So it would be one motion. Uh, and again, what we are, we're suggesting from a staff level is that you determine whether you believe that uh it's a SEQA appeal as well. Uh, regardless of your decision on that, um, we also just, we do take a look at SEQA in case a court comes back and doesn't agree then and says this, say, you say this is not SEQA and they say it is. We've already covered our bases by doing a SEQA analysis. We also request that you look at um the county zoning code, the commercial cannabis ordinance, or any other rules or regulations that are within this appeal as part of one finding.
And I, I would like to follow up on the statements that were made by a couple of folks in public comment about. We have these rules about what information should and shouldn't be included in an appeal. And, and there was an, an indication that the appendix C that is officially a part of the record now, and, and I assume is the one that we're looking at, didn't exist when the appeal was filed. And therefore, it is a change to the records that are being considered because it's, it's evolving. And, and I can understand why we want to can, again, continue to get better and address new concerns that get raised and all that kind of stuff. But I'm trying to get back to the legality aspect that I heard presented and, and understand your position on that.
Thank you. Uh, this appeal is under 17.34 of our code. Um, it does allow staff to present anything new, um, specifically under 060 up until the beginning of the hearing. So it, there is, there's an ability to supplement any reports that were provided. It's the board's pleasure if you uh believe something was provided that wasn't considered by planning about whether you want to send it back to planning to have them re-review it. Uh, but you were also hearing it uh somewhat de novo or um hearing the facts as they're presented to you and can make any decision uh either way. Um, so you can have evaluated this level as well.
And then a clarification from Drew that I also heard that uh while we are seeing this document and potentially considering it as part of a decision, uh, the planning commission did not, and I just want to confirm that that is the case.
That is the case. And just to point out, I think some of the, you know, time, timeline-based misrepresentations that I heard, um, the appendix C was provided in a timely fashion, once requested by the appellant's. And there was no delay on the part of staff in providing that. Um, the appendixy wasn't requested until after this item was presented to you um at the last board meeting when it was initially heard. And so we did not feel, based on the information stated in the reasons for appeal to the planning commission, that it was a appeal of the appendix C document specifically, and that it was mostly focused on the director's decision.
Okay, so I guess, CAO title, I think that is maybe outside of the scope of what we're deciding today, but it would seem that if somebody is appealing something and documents that are related to it, I, I get the clarification like, well, staff felt that wasn't related because it wasn't part, but I.
It's, it's not as much a staff request or a staff opinion is if you look at the staff report that was put together for the PC, it's quite extensive. And the PC didn't feel they needed. And I don't want to speak for the PC or speak for any of those five members. But at that particular appeal, they felt they had enough information to make an appropriate decision. So that, without actually physically looking at the appendixy document, because the extent that the staff report addressed all the issues of the appeal.
And actually, my comment, sorry, uh, because we're talking about multiple things, but my comment was more about should uh someone who has filed an appeal have to somehow know that additional materials have been submitted, that they need to know to ask for, and then they'll get it versus if there is a live appeal, an active appeal, anything that gets submitted that's related to that should automatically be provided to them. Uh, it, that's a process thing outside of this, I'll just mention it. Because uh, I, I can understand the frustration of how am I supposed to know that new documents were made available that could affect the appeal that I paid $500 for and submitted all this work for? And it's just, it's a disconnect in my mind, but not.
I can appreciate that, and we can look into that, but there are some legal aspects I'd want to look at too in far as, and then is what we're committing to as a county to provide don't know exactly what somebody's even requesting. Um, so I mean, there's, there's two sides to it.
Yeah, yeah, more discussion necessarily. Okay. Any other questions before we go into motions and discussion? No, okay. Uh, I guess based on county council and staff recommendation, I think the first thing we need to determine is do we feel that the SEQA aspect of this should be considered as part of our decision? Uh, because then we have to go through a process for that.
So, and I'll be taking notes because we'll be creating written findings on it. Um, and in, in advance, we typically do create findings both ways, just so we, we have it ready to go if you're interested in it. Um, but what we'd be looking for you to determine at this stage is whether you believe the language in the appeal was sufficiently specific to trigger a SEQA review. The language that we pulled out are, was broad based, including references to the impacts of water usage in buildings and, and the fish in both creeks and impacts on local citizens. Um, you're welcome to look through it as well and see if you can pull out anything else that potentially would um, be in the ballpark of SEQA, but that is what we um pulled out. Um, and then the question is whether that language, as broad as it is, triggers this board to have a, the jurisdiction to review uh the underlying SEQA component. I, I guess.
We have to make a motion, then that's what I'm trying to.
Yes, you can ask clarifying questions at this point. Um, but if you do want to get into some in-depth discussion of how your findings are going to look, I would request a, just a, a broad emotion. You don't have to be specifics with findings at this point.
Okay. Um, both from a timing standpoint and from a processing standpoint, I'd like to take a five-minute break. So we'll be back in five minutes, 12:41. Okay, we are back. I have requested that the language that was mentioned, that the board should be considering to determine whether or not that language triggers board consideration and review of SEQA documents. So I asked that language be put up on the screen so that while we all have access to it and we've looked through it in our backup materials, we're all looking at the exact same thing and can be focused on those question, on that question. we're all looking at the exact same thing and can be focused on those question, on that question at hand. So we're pulling that up, it'll take a minute. And I would like to acknowledge Director Plabani being virtually with us while he is supposedly on vacation. Thank you for your dedication.
Thanks, Richard.
And so this reason for appeal, this is the language that you're saying that we should be considering.
Sorry. We were just looking at some language mixture, but yeah, so the reason for appeal is what we look into.
Okay, so what the language that you're saying is, I don't think that they took into consideration the impacts of water usage and buildings and the fish in both creeks involved and the impacts on local citizens, some who have lived there for generations. So that is the language that you're saying does not specifically call out SEQA. But the board needs to determine if that language they, we feel should trigger us to include consideration of SEQA in this appeal decision.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so hopefully that provides some clarity. I would say to Supervisor Carpenter-Harris, there was a question, do we need a motion first? I think unless we're asking questions, yes, we should have a motion and we all understand that motion can be followed by other motions, but something to get the conversation started.
And to circle back one more time, Margaret, this is two motions, we're not wrapping it into one. We have two questions before us. Does it or does it not need SEQA review? And then the question of the appeal itself.
That is correct.
And are we taking one motion at a time? Is that your plan?
It was considered this first part, the first part about SEQA first, because then that needs to be part of our decision if we are including it or we're specifically excluding it and we move on.
If I can make a recommendation, it's your pleasure. I would at this point request a motion to either approve or deny the appeal. And then we will have a discussion regarding what our findings look like. Within our findings, we'll be asking these specific questions about whether triggered SEQA, whether SEQA was complied with, whether code was complied with, whether any other regulations were complied with.
And so if we feel that that appeal language does trigger SEQA, then automatically you would be saying that you wanted to uphold the appeal.
No, it would have nothing to do that. It just is, we would have to add additional findings in there that discuss SEQA.
And so if you thought that you were going to deny the appeal and uphold the license, then we don't have a SEQA discussion.
We're going to make findings with either way.
Either way.
Findings that specify why you're making your decision. And we're going to be looking at SEQA and we're going to be looking at other factors as well. So at this point, again, we're just looking for you to make a motion that doesn't have to be voted on and to open up discussion. And then we'll go through it and make sure the findings, whichever way the board decides to go, are accurate and reflect the board's intent.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion. Not everybody at once.
Well, I'm still struggling here because usually generally in the past when I've made a motion, I've included conditions in the motion as findings. And so if we're going to add findings in the future, I'm struggling with that. So I guess if we just make a kind of a blanket.
It's your pleasure. You're welcome to make a motion with findings right now, but I know that the board seemed to want to have discussions. So that's great opportunity. It's your pleasure.
Trying to figure out how to say it.
I got it.
Sorry, so one more time, if we make, the first motion needs to be for whether or not we're going to uphold the appeal or deny the appeal. And then after that, we make a motion on, on why we're doing that, the findings in SEQA.
So what we're requesting is a motion at this point to approve or deny the appeal. If you have the findings available and would like to make them, you're welcome to include that in your findings. Otherwise, the board will enter a discussion and as staff will push you to articulate findings, which will then document at that point, we would request the motion to be amended to include the findings.
So that in our discussion, the determination of whether SEQA should be included could be determined and that could be a finding is it's being considered. And then what we think about it would be another finding. And okay, so is that clear? Okay. Get some people's time to think, it's important matter.
Can I, Margaret, can I come talk to you for a second? I just need to ask a question.
I am always available to talk. I would suggest we take a recess to do that versus.
It's fine, enough reason.
I mean.
I just want to make sure that the wording is correct.
We can, we can finesse the wording in the future.
We can do that publicly as well. Or you can send me email and I can.
Take a shot and then we'll. Let's take a three-minute recess.
Well, if it'll help to get the ball rolling, I will move to uphold the appeal and then I'll add my findings that I have in the future. But I'll move to uphold the appeal and then we can, if somebody's seconded, we can get into the discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, would you still like some time to talk through some details?
Now that we have a motion on the table, we can.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Any other motions to get started or are we ready to dig?
Yeah, let's, let's discuss.
Okay.
Are regarding the findings or the, my concerns with some of the SEQA process. I'm sorry, I apologize.
And in our discussion in our finding section, I think council's been very clear that we need to make a determination if this was enough language to trigger a SEQA. A SEQA review and I believe it was because they are SEQA-related questions. My concern there is, I think, and it'll be later, we need to direct staff to make it more clear on our appeal paperwork, what is being appealed. Then it's two different distinct questions when we're talking about these. And we need people to check one box or both boxes in the future. That would make our lives a lot easier, I'm saying. But I do believe that we, we do have sufficient language to bring up this SEQA question.
Okay.
All right.
You're in agreement?
I am in agreement.
Okay.
So I think.
Make sure you're close enough to your mic.
I think automatically if you're going to dig a hundred-foot by hundred-foot hole in the ground that holds one million gallons of water, it would trigger SEQA. I don't, I don't know how you would get around that. And it also says activities, activity for cultivation or water use for cultivation is 50,000 gallons per year or 10,000 gallons per month. Understandable, I guess. So say we doubled up on that, make it 25, 30,000 gallons. They're going to dig a hole in the ground that's going to hold a million gallons of water. I just don't see how that wouldn't trigger some sort of SEQA evaluation.
Okay, so I think just to be clear though, what I heard from county council is we're not getting into the actual details of the environmental issues, but we're looking at that language that was put up on the screen and saying, does that trigger us to consider SEQA documentation? And you're saying yes. Okay, so we have, yes, as Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Is now time to say what the findings I have with my concerns with the SEQA process?
I think first we're trying to get clarity that we have a board consensus that it should be considered. That the language that was submitted in the appeal is sufficient to trigger us considering the SEQA information in this appeal process.
I, I do believe in regards to the impact on the tribal lands and the people who, the community at large. I, I believe that tribal resources probably need a bit more looking into in order to protect those. Those are something that can't be, it cannot be restored once destroyed. And any argument that says, well, they're not written down or they're not registered or what have you. We have to remember that native peoples often didn't write things down, stories were passed down through generations verbally. And when sites were being identified over the years, I think that there's probably a a lack of trust in allowing others to know where things are. And so to say, well, this isn't designated or that isn't designated, or this means this according to law. You absolutely miss the cultural and religious impacts that that has on the people who are from these places and spaces. And so I understand that from a law and process perspective, boxes have been checked. But I also know that the Titanic had enough lifeboats on it according to the laws at that time, and we all know how that worked out. So I think that the humanity piece has been overlooked a bit in this process. And I have pulled up SEQA requirements for tribal consultation and I'm prepared to share some of those in conversation.
Okay, and so I didn't, I just want to come back and make sure because I think we're still, we're digging into another layer. We're, both you and Supervisor Gogan, we're digging into specific aspects of the environmental impact that we think are issues. But the first question is, did the language that was put up here on the appeal document qualify it to trigger board consideration of those SEQA documents or not? And so, okay, so yes, okay, thank you. So we have consensus that we believe that the language there is sufficient to trigger a review of those documents. So now we can go back to, I think both Supervisor Gogan and Carpenter-Harris were digging in on some of the issues that they felt were reflected in what they read. And I'll need to go back to that Supervisor Carpenter-Harris, if you want to pick it back up and then we'll go to others.
Chair, may I ask what, just, can we articulate what words in the appeal does the board feel trigger, triggers that document?
Is that a requirement, county council?
Would be a finding.
We're trying to make findings. So I'm, as you're going, I'm trying to write down what you say because we do want to have findings. So whichever side is not victorious here has the ability to properly appeal.
And so the finding can't just be that the board considered the wording and determined that it was sufficient?
Absolutely can be.
Okay.
And that is, and that's kind of the language I've started with and I'm happy to read you out what I've written based on what I've heard you say. But again, we can also do that at the end if you would like. It's your pleasure.
And in that finding, can we say that the the board found that the wording in the appeal document was sufficient? But also there were more in our original backup data that was also, is that something that we can consider? Or is it only the language off this letter? Because I'm, I'm looking at only this letter right now and I see that impacts of water usage, that's straight out of a SEQA document. And but, and the fish in both creeks involved, those to me are the, the triggers for SEQA. Buildings, not so much. And possibly the impact on citizens, but that to me is more of the other side of our appeal. So to me, the language I'm seeing is impacts on water usage and fish in both creeks. Those are the, the key words to me.
I, I would include with that buildings. When you build a building, do you not have SEQA review?
Not necessarily, because a lot of buildings are considered a use by right. So like your building permit.
Only looking at this document?
Yeah.
Then we don't know what that means or doesn't mean. Was that the answer, Margaret, that we're just going by this document, not by everything else we saw?
That is correct.
So then I would include buildings.
And the other comment I would make is that I feel like, you know, these appeal processes are an interesting thing because you have, whether it's cannabis-related or not, you have someone who has gone through a process feel like they followed all the rules, they're doing all the things, they've probably been heavily involved in all of the details. And then you have people that are involved in an appeal who aren't as involved in that process. And so to know to use a specific amount of, type of language to trigger something to be included or not almost requires that they go then hire consultants and lawyers and everything else just to be able to have their, their concerns raised. So I think that as Supervisor Fraser said, I think it'd be helpful if we can improve our process over time. But I agree, the language that I do see here and realizing that, you know, laypeople trying to communicate what they think is important should be considered. We need to be able to translate a little bit with that. So it does meet the same criteria for me as well. Okay?
Anyone, if you're ready to hear it.
And CA Tuttle, you're good with what you've heard? You got the details that you were looking for? Okay, thank you. Yes, would you read that, Matt?
Appellant did not state any specific violation of California Environmental Quality Review Act, but did state language that could lead the board to consider it to be an appeal of SEQA violations. In his notice of appeal, appellant generally referred to broad considerations related to the impacts of water usage in buildings and fish in both creeks. Although vague, the board determined appellant rode enough to trigger review of any violations of SEQA.
We are so eloquent.
You're very smart.
Thank you for your help. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Fishing game was out there. And there was no violations related to.
Mike.
Oh, sorry. There was no violations related to fishing game code. And they were out there on, what date is there, October 10th, October 10th, 2023. So I'm reading the environmental compliance summary for Trinity County on this parcel. Staff inspected the property identified above for compliance with fishing game code, fish and game code regulations, including but not limited to sections 1602, 5650. At time of inspection, no violations related to the above referenced fishing game code were documented.
Okay, so you're just trying to, that's a finding to you is that there were no problems identified?
Well, I think that could have been a finding if they went out there and said, hey, there's a bunch of fish out here. But apparently they had someone to come out there in the last four months and make an inspection and there was no violations. Although I don't believe that. I think, I think there is fishing, but I'm not a fishing game, but it says right there that they were there and.
You don't think there are.
Well, I'm kind of struggling here, counsel, on how to move forward with this because I made the motion to uphold the appeal. I do think that there was grounds for SEQA review. Concerned with SEQA. That's moving forward beyond this. I do need, no, we, we need to have a discussion as to SEQA. But that's not my primary concern. So how do we progress through the discussion on SEQA? And do you want us to try to make that first and make a determination on SEQA? And are we making a determination? Are we going to make a determination whether this appendix C is acceptable?
That is correct. So the next question that I would ask you to look at is since a review of potential violations of SEQA was triggered, that you make an analysis if you believe in this specific situation, there any SEQA violations?
And by violations, do you mean that they've done something that it was in violation of their appendix C or do you mean errors and omissions in the appendix C?
Both.
Okay. Yes.
Or either.
So I have a couple of questions. I don't know if this is helping us move forward from where you're at, but it might help me align. So I have a couple of questions. I don't know if this is helping us move forward from where you're at, but it might help me align that. Has the regional water board been out to look at the stream and confirm that what was reflected on paper is accurate? Maybe I shouldn't be asking you. I should be asking Drew. Sorry.
Jill, are you referring to the stream classification specifically?
Uh, anything to do with the stream? I want to know if they were there. So Supervisor Gogan had noted that fish and wildlife were there. I want to know if the regional water board was there likely to confirm that what we see on paper is accurate?
Um, I don't, so yes, water board was there. Um, I don't recall the specific date, but I can try and look it up if that's helpful. And then I don't believe that the purpose of their site visit was to specifically address or potentially, you know, redefine the water board classification of that stream in question. Um, but yes, uh, following the photos provided by the appellant, um, with the little gas water pump in them. Um, staff did reach out and refer this to water board and water board did go out, um, and visit the site. And they also did not, uh, find any violations per se.
Okay, thanks. Um, Drew, if you can find that date, that'd be great.
Yeah, just give me a few minutes and I'll dig it up.
You bet.
Supervisor Fraser, did you get the clarity you need to be able to start, um, laying in on things?
I, I do have, I have seen some issues with the Sequa document that, um, though I don't think that it's, uh, one, one of the most glaring ones I noticed, um, was the, the T-Pud, um, issue. I mean, that, that to me, that's, um, simply a cut and paste issue that and it is true in most of Trinity County. And I can see how it slipped through the cracks. But, um, there is no T-Pud power in Hattan Shaw. It's, uh, and then other portions of that document, it says that the, it's on solar, which uh, would also be a mitigation measure if you use solar for the, the actual grow also. But to say that it's attached to T-Pud power so that it has green energy, it, it can't be unless, um, we pick up Jeremy Brown's torch and get a T-Pud to South County.
Okay. Supervisor Carpenter Harris, I know you had some things that you were preparing to share. Still working on that? Are you ready?
No, I'm still working. And, and I just want to clarify, um, Supervisor Fraser's question is that this is not the opportunity to pick apart, um, the appendix C. Uh, we're not looking, and, and you can, you're welcome to within the findings. But what, what I really need for the findings is a determination if, uh, the board believes that this appellant, um, provided any evidence of that this project would violate Sequa.
Okay. And so that's why I was asking that question. Are we talking about, is this document sufficient? Or are we talking about the process being sufficient? Because if you go through the process, okay, we've made a determination in the past that this process is sufficient. Um, the problem is that this document isn't quite sufficient. Um, I don't know where you lost, where we lost that in the review portion. I know we've hired consultants to do the, the review and our consultants probably don't know that there's not T-Pud power. I can understand that one getting through, um, but that's an easy miss. Um, the question, there are other questions I, I do have with the Sequa document. Um, this is actually the first appendix C I've read. And I'm, I, I'm going to follow up with Drew, uh, to see, I, I, I'm interested in some of this stuff now. So, um, but that's where I need clarification is, are we saying that our Sequa process is insufficient because I don't think I'm ready to make that leap? What I'm saying is this particular Sequa document has some issues.
And, and I appreciate that. Uh, and it's hard for the answer because it's ultimately your pleasure, what you want your findings to say. However, what we are looking at is not, um, you know, necessarily the specifics in the Sequa document. Unless they show a violation of the act, unless there's something legally insufficient about them. Um, facts that are maybe a little bit different, a book lead to the same conclusion, typographical errors. Um, that's not what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about whether you believe that as part of this project, there's a Sequa violation.
It would another, uh, approach to that also be that there is insufficient evidence to ensure that there were not Sequa violation. Because what I'm hearing is if it's incomplete, if there isn't sufficient information, if there's problems with it, then I can't, I'm, I'm speaking for someone else here at the moment. I can't say that for sure. I believe that there haven't been Sequa violations because it's, it's not complete in my view. Versus, do we have to rather say, no, I can point to this specific thing where I see there's Sequa violation. I just need, are, are both possible outcomes and viable quote findings or not?
Yes, they're both viable findings. Absolutely. Um, I do, I will be pushing you as part of your findings to look at the substantial evidence standard. Meaning what you're going to have to make a determination of is whether the appellant made a presentation that provided substantial evidence to overturn a decision that was made at a lower level. So that's kind of what I'm saying is going the nitpicky level. I, it's your pleasure if you heard anything you want to dig into. And I shouldn't use the word nitpicky. I, what I mean is more typographical and not, or, um, you know, scribbler errors versus legal, uh, missteps. Um, but you're welcome to look at that. But again, we're looking at it from a substantial evidence standard that the appellant presented enough evidence to overturn a lower decision.
Okay. So I, I just want to bring back as you're considering supervisors, we had consensus that the language said was said enough for us to consider Sequa. So now we're being asked, do we feel, since we're considering it, there were Sequa violations? Or that there are enough errors or omissions in the document to make it difficult to have confidence that violations didn't take place or that all secret requirements were met? And so that's my understanding of where we are trying to establish findings that would support one of those positions.
That's correct. The beginning of my finding, I have two written, one for yes and one no, is to the extent the appellant specified a specific claim under Sequa, which you've determined they have. The appellant failed to demonstrate through substantial evidence any violation of the act, or the appellant demonstrated through substantial evidence a violation of the act. Then you have to fill in below, whichever one you select.
Um, okay. So what if we started by talking the appellant addresses that they feel the appendix C did not address the issue of the ket and lily? So we heard testimony of it's significant, testimony of it's not significant. Um, is Sequa required to look into that and, um, and address that more fully than it was?
And who are you directing that question to?
Anybody that could answer it.
Um, I would say probably from a Sequa standpoint, no, it wouldn't be something that we would address because it's not contained in Sequa law.
Okay.
Um, but it would be.
Why don't we ask Drew?
It's on the overall picture.
Is Drew selling one?
I, I sure am. Um, so in terms of the ket and lily, um, as one of the requirements, um, required attachments to the appendix C and, and generally, uh, as a result of the EIR requirement for biological reconnaissance surveys to be conducted. Um, typically how that's done is the California natural diversity database is referenced by the biologist who, who is performing the biological reconnaissance survey. And so a, as you all stated, um, that plant species is, is not listed on the CNDB. And therefore, um, is not addressed from a regulatory requirement perspective.
I would imagine that the human species is also not listed. However, they live there and the people that have lived there for generations have lived there for generations. Um, in the planning and research regarding tribal consultation is, says that it's imperative for the protection of tribal spaces and resources that are centrally important to tribal culture and tradition. One of the things that I struggle with so desperately with this whole conversation is that we have gone through the list and I think it was one of the, the folks that called in and said, you know, you've checked this box. You've checked this box. You've checked this box. You've checked this box. And because of that, then the big box should be checked. But there's humanity in between the boxes. And some of the things that the people brought forward with the, the, the lily and with the, the, the three mounds, you know, that were going to be, you know, impaired by this with the visual overlooking the, the valley. You can't put that stuff in a box and you can't say it matters or it doesn't matter because the law says it matters or it doesn't matter. We have all lived in society long enough to know that laws change and the biology of belief changes. And we move and do things. And sometimes we disregard and sometimes we regard, we, we regard them as important or not. These tribal resources are irre- replicable. We cannot put them back. We cannot make them again. We cannot conjure up the people from the past and ask them to rebuild them, redo them. They are intrinsic, not only to the life and breath of the people who have been in these landscapes for forever. They're part of their religion. They're part of their culture and they're part of the very fibers of how they do business. Sure, you can drive by a native's yard and say they got too many cars or what have you, and they're not respecting the landscape. And, and I appreciate that. Um, but I also appreciate the fact that it's our responsibility as land managers and land stores to not just look at the boxes being checked. And I, I'm very upset by the fact that the tribal consultants, whether it's the fellow that lives next door or the folks from the tribes feel like they weren't fully engaged in this process from the beginning to the end. And that's something that I find, um, to be disturbing. Um, I understand that there are laws have been met and processes have been met. But the human condition, uh, really needs to be addressed in this. And, and I believe that the, the folks who are speaking from the tribal, um, tribal component in that area have brought forth some very concerning pieces of information in my opinion.
Supervisor Cox, you, I think started to say something before.
Uh, no, I just brought up the lily and, and interested in the conversation. Um, so I, I agree with Supervisor Carpenter Harris about the human condition and fact that we need to look between boxes. And, um, I want to know from council's perspective, um, are we, are we free to look between boxes?
If I could ask for some more clarification about what do you mean between boxes?
Yeah, because, because, because you're here to legally defend us.
So I am requesting that you look at whether there is any, um, substantial evidence of violations of Sequa.
Okay.
Um, that is, that's the legal standard we're looking at.
And we have, we're looking at whether or not the, the appellant, um, prove that there was a violation of Sequa.
Correct.
Um, and that is inclusive of all the backup material that we've received on this, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, um, we do have some questions that have been raised, um, that I don't know if it constitutes a violation of Sequa. That's my, my issue. But I would say that the appellant has raised enough questions to, uh, to at least make it extremely difficult to want to be the one that puts their name on that Sequa document. Um, there are issues that seem like, um, there was some cut and paste type answers. And I know I've seen enough Sequa documents to know that a lot of them are cut and paste. Um, a lot of the stuff is the same, no matter where you are. The first 250 pages of every THP are the same. Um, but there are some issues that, um, are, uh, intriguing to say the least. Uh, and I would say it's omissions probably, or maybe just the, the fact that it's stated in the appendix C that construction's going to take place on previously disturbed sites. Um, where the proposed greenhouses, building and pond are, are all undisturbed sites. There is one, um, fence in the area that was cited in the past. It's not quite in the same spot that would be considered a slightly disturbed site, I guess it's. But, um, the, the entire footprint of the proposed grow area is not a disturbed site, at least in the aspect of cannabis. I mean, it's, people have used it for grazing, whatnot for, for decades, centuries. Um, but where the ponds going, proposed to be, um, is undisturbed, where the grow is proposed to be is undisturbed. So, um, the, to say that all this will happen on disturbed areas, the only place that it could happen would be on the road and on the house pad on the north side of the property, when all the stuff is proposed to be on the south side of Rusini Road. So the, the, those are the kind of discrepancies that I'm talking about where I don't want to be nitpicky with Sequa. But, um, I find it difficult to sign off on something that has those discrepancies in it. Um, the there's I, I'll leave it that there, that for now. I don't, I'm not looking to try to pick apart the appendix C. I just think that there are enough issues that I have concerns with it. Um, and probably most of them could be fixed. It's just they weren't done correctly. I, and in my opinion, I'm sorry.
Um, could I ask you, counsel, to address, there's a statement in the narrative of the appellant that says the project has changed, so the Sequa is invalid. Would that be true?
Drew would have to answer the question regarding whether there is a change in project. But yes, if there's a substantial change in projects, that does require additional secret review at times, if it triggers additional secret review.
Okay.
So I, but I don't, that's a Drew question.
Okay, Drew, could you?
So in terms of, you know, the change in validating, um, the, the appendix C or being in violation of Sequa, I would have to bump that back to counsel. But I think I can provide some, some clarity in terms of, um, you know, to my recollection, the primary change, uh, that happened in the appendix C document. Um, Ms. Wright spoke to earlier in her public comment, and that was specifically related to sort of the timeline for the Chris search. And the fact that at the time when the initial appendix C was prepared and the Chris search that was utilized, um, for that initial appendix C, there was subsequent information. Um, and so that was the reason that the appendix C was updated. And at that time, once it was acknowledged that there were, um, archaeological resources, one of the other changes aside from just including, you know, the updated information from, from the Chris search performed by the archaeologist was also to. Chris search performed by the archaeologists was also to add additional mitigation measures, which aren't included in the IR, but we added as an additional mitigation measure to the project, which is, you know, specifically the the concept of fencing off or, you know, restricting access to those specific areas that were flagged off on our recent site inspection from disturbance in the future.
I'm going to come back to the comments and question related to the between the boxes part. Because in my discussions or exchanges prior to this, you know, I was looking for clarification about what level of board discretion is appropriate in a hearing of this kind. And the answer I got, which please feel free to clarify, is we have the discretion of how we interpret the findings and the law, but we can only act upon that interpretation of the law. We can't say, well, we don't like the law. But we can say, we feel that this interpretation of the law and these findings lead to this decision. But not, we don't like that the law doesn't address this or it does address that. So that, I just want to provide that. That's my view of clarification about between the boxes as I come into this discussion. And I would just ask folks, as you're sitting here and we're struggling, I think, to get down to some specifics. But I guess what I'd ask you is, when you're thinking about which way you're going to vote on this, are things that we're concerned about within the SEQA document and what we've heard about the realities, if you will, causing you to, are they influencing your decision? And if so, explain that, because I think that gets to the heart of the findings. It's, if you're saying, yes, there's, when I look at the SEQA documentation, when I look at the the information that was provided by all the various parties, I have SEQA-related concerns that are causing me to vote this way or lean this way or this way. And those are, I think that's what we're really looking for, for findings. And if they don't, then we don't need to keep beating up the horse. So I just want to make sure that we're grounded in that. So I'd leave that to consider and if you want to add anything else to what we've said. I mean, I've taken a number of notes about inaccuracies, things that maybe were felt were omitted, and questions about whether the process, you know, should have involved reconsideration of SEQA because of changes in the project or not. So I've heard a number of things. What I'm not clear on is, are we poking holes or are we documenting things that are influencing our decision?
I appreciate that. That's why I've tried to, I don't want to just be poking holes in an appendix C. That's not the, in my intention. Like I stated before, my biggest concern is not with the SEQA document because SEQA documents as a whole are just documenting what you're doing. It doesn't, to me, SEQA doesn't fix environmental damage. It just tells us what it is. I guess what I would be saying is that I, and I did, I think it does affect somewhat my, I would vote on this, to look at the SEQA document and find as many issues, they might not be egregious problems, but on a whole level, I think that I would have a hard time to support adopting a document that I know isn't factually accurate. So that does affect my ability to vote for it. And I don't know, I guess I'm going back to Planning Commissioner Land where we actually had to sign off on ISMNDs and EIRs and such like, and our job was to find these little things because it was our document. And so when I read through it and I go, oh, well, that's factually inaccurate. At this level, because we're not adopting this SEQA document, I can't say this needs to be corrected and then I can vote on it. That's what I was, that's what I was talking to council for, because that's what we did in the past. It's like, this is inaccurate. You have to fix it. So personally, I wouldn't vote to approve that appendix C because I know there are factual inaccuracies in it. Can they be fixed? Yeah, but not today. It would require a reanalysis because you have to, if you have a mitigation measure that doesn't actually apply, you have to have a new mitigation measure. And so I couldn't on the fly change those. I do have some other questions also concerning SEQA, and I guess that would be something that I could address to Drew because I wrote this question down on the, as we were going through the discussion before. And we're going back to the pond question, which, sorry Drew. If you have a proposed pond that may or may not be permitted in the future, how can that be used as a mitigation measure later in the document for water storage?
I'm not sure I understand your question. I'm sorry, Dan.
Well, when you were just talking before about the pond, you said that the pond was proposed. They didn't have the grading and stuff for it yet. But it's also listed in the document as a mitigation measure for water storage. So if they have enough water storage, that's fine. But those are the kind of things that's I'm struggling with, with the appendix C.
So I'll do my best to try and answer the question as I understand it. Essentially, you know, you could consider that creating additional water storage capacity would be a mitigation measure to the concerns of groundwater supply. As it relates to the specifics of the construction of the proposed pond, the mitigations for the potential impacts to that construction activity would be addressed elsewhere under, you know, other mitigation measure or resource category sections. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm okay. I think I'm okay with your answer. Thank you.
Board, I just wanted to propose, I apologize the texting, we were just texting some ideas back and forth, and I wanted to share them with you. So if the board has concern regarding the SEQA document, there are, or the appendix C and not being properly updated or not fully addressing specific issues, the board can, if they choose to approve this, I guess it would be to deny this appeal. They can deny it with conditions of having this appendix C be updated. Or the alternative, you can send it back and have the appendix, you can postpone this hearing and send it back to have it updated. Both of those are options.
Basically, the matter would be reheard after the appendix C was updated?
That's one of the two options. The other option is, again, if you move forward and deny the appeal at this time, you can deny it with the condition of requiring them to update the appendix C and have it go through the formalized process. But it's your pleasure how you want to proceed.
Thank you.
A bit of a blank check that route. I kind of just want to address the different grievances here. I guess if anything, I guess what's going through my mind is SEQA requires that you mitigate to a level of less than significant. Right? And so I would think that, I don't know, because when I just stop reading and walk away and just ponder the whole, like, reason that we're here, if we were mitigating anything to a level of less than significant, I would think that we would end up feeling like, well, we're all good. We had a problem, we fixed it, we're good. And the fact that there are so many things that are like, eh, yeah, we're not good, then the question that remains is, if we're the agency that's supposed to be comfortable seeing we did mitigate to a level less than significant, and yet there are still all these concerns, then that makes me say, well, then, then did we really? And did we mitigate, like, just generally as the EIR applies to the program as a whole? Or did we mitigate very specifically as in just this site? Is, are there uniquenesses here that require a bit more? So that was a stream of consciousness to tell you where I'm at. And so I kind of just would like to ask about, okay, so the property is surrounded by Class 1 creeks, which are incorrectly labeled as Class 2 on the photo provided. Are there things that are incorrect on our photos that are causing a problem? No, I don't know. Pardon me. I don't know who I'm supposed to be asking.
Drew?
Drew.
Yeah, I can try and answer that question. So the concerns related to the classification of water courses, I would say is outside of certainly the scope of our EIR and the specific appendix C and has to do with Water Board as a separate regulatory agency and how they do water course classification. So we rely on the Water Board's classifications for the appendix C analysis. And so concerns that that classification is incorrect really aren't addressed through the appendix C process.
Okay, and so that would circle back to my previous question, and you said that the Water Board had been there and looked at everything comfortable.
And I apologize, I am not able to get into the county server. I did reach out to staff to see if they could get me the dates for Water Board inspections. And so at this time, I'm not able to give you any specific dates. But what I will say is that generally, when we're looking at Water Board compliance, we use the, what we refer to as CWIX, which is the Water Board Integrated Water Quality Portal. And, you know, they have to go through Water Board enrollment specific to for cannabis cultivation. And so at this time, there's no evidence that there are any violations from Water Board or any non-compliance issues.
And so then this next statement here on the appellant's narrative, photo 2 shows pumping water directly from the creek on a date outside of the forbearance time. So that should show up as a violation if there was a problem?
I believe that, well, so that photo is confusing to me, just generally. Because that is not the point of diversion. And I think you can see in that photo, if I'm not mistaken, the sort of round concrete cistern in the back, sort of left-hand corner or side of that photo. I'm not looking at the photo, so I apologize. So that is their approved point of diversion where they have a water right. I just don't, I don't know why they would have been pumping directly from the creek when there's a shallow well right there that they could pump out of. I also don't know why they, what the need for that additional water beyond what they would have been able to access from that shallow well would have been, considering that there was no active cultivation at that time. So that photo is a bit concerning and kind of a mystery to me as to why that activity would have occurred. But that is the reason that we reached out to Water Board and CDFW for their input.
Okay, so you're telling me you don't know why they did it, but the picture shows it being done. And you're saying that you reached out to the Water Board with the concern, and what did the Water Board say?
Well, on record, we have no violations, so that's all I can really offer at this time.
So Drew, I don't know if that's Drew or actually Supervisor Carpenter Harris with your background, if you know. But, you know, I heard, I think it was Tom Belenko was showing the map that showed there was, this was the only permitted water right, if you will, in that area. And yet referencing that there are probably further back dated water rights and so forth. Do we know that when the Water Board is issuing something new like this, that they are considering whether they're on their map or not? All of the water rights that have already been issued for that area and taking into consideration the cumulative impact of that water on the other rights and on the area and so forth, do you know? And again, I'm looking at you, but I can also just point that to Drew. I'm just trying to understand that process.
I think that that's their goal, is to always look and see how many straws are in the, you know, are in the ground or extracting from overland flow. But I know that in a lot of cases in Trinity County, if water rights are, you know, very, very old, many people have never filed them. They just were assumed because they've come with a property. They're pre, I think it's 1906, and so they, I think that probably just at random, I would say that over half water users in our county probably do not have like
Registered.
All registered. I do want to say to Jill's comment about, or I'm sorry, Supervisor Cox's comment about, is this a special place? You'd said that you'd asked that, and I think it's important to recognize in science, not everything, you know, we can, in math, you can make two and two equals four, and we're all good with that. In natural resource management, that's not always the case. Each, lots of places are unique. A lot of things overlay and they work pretty good. But in some specific scenarios, you have locations that are unique. And I would say that this valley is definitely one of those places that is unique. And so overlaying our standard form is causing what we're standing here with today. And it's, this is a troubling situation. As Supervisor Cox said, it's, we're not able to make both sides happy in any way. But I just want to read real quick this document from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. It says, tribal consultation early on in the project develops process allows tribes to be involved in the process and address their legitimate and culturally sensitive concerns. Tribal consultation will be project-specific, land-specific, and tribe-specific. No one-size-fits-all. Meaningful engagement with tribal governments is necessary to adequately understand and mitigate the impacts for impacts to tribal cultural and resources. Tribal Historic Preservation Officers are experts on their tribe's cultural resources. Through tribal consultation, they are able to readily identify and determine the importance of specific resources and landscapes that may not be recognized even by an experienced archaeologist. And so this is in the SEQA for tribal consultation. And I, over and over today, through the folks that came before us, I can't say that I feel like this was completely done. I just wanted to read that from the
And I think to tear off of that, and I appreciate that, we have statements of overriding consideration that apply to our program generally in our programmatic EIR. But it seems like because of these cultural resources, there would have to be statements of overriding consideration saying that, yeah, we've looked at these resources and we're going to let them go. And to me, I don't, I don't see that that's appropriate when these are that special and unique. So I'm glancing toward council's direction, but she's probably missing, because I want to know, and I mean, that's perfectly fine. Can I say that?
Can I add on to that a little bit?
I want to know if I'm getting outside of a box of this board's consideration.
I haven't heard anything that's gotten outside of the box of the board's consideration. I do think that, again, what I'm hearing a lot of is we don't have the answers for it or we don't know. And we can always create findings that require additional information. So you have, you have the ability to get these questions answered as part of your findings. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay, all right.
So a couple of my concerns, obviously, was the fish. And I looked through here and I find fishing game was out there and they thought it was okay. The cultural resources, it looks here on February 28th, a week ago. County staff performed an additional site inspection in attendance at the site along with staff or tribal cultural monitors, archa- archaeological consultants, applicants and their agents, as well as several local residents. Concerns related to archaeological resources were addressed. And action items were established in order to protect identified resources, including type and location of physical barriers to prevent ground disturbances as well as signage requirements. So that was, you know, I feel like hiding everybody else. That's, you don't want to get into the cultural thing at all. They were out there last week and previous to last week and they have made some sort of mitigation efforts. And I don't know if anybody in the room was part of that. Group that was out there on February twenty eighth. But they did have what looks like tribal cultural monitors, archaeologists. And that those items were addressed and barriers to prevent grounded services as well as signage requirements were made.
Could I ask what page from the backup you're reading from right now?
I'm reading from, here you go, Jill.
It's actually in the body of the staff report.
Thank you.
Let's see a page.
I got it. Thank you. I got it. Mm hmm. And so my follow-up question to that would be. Were those mitigations made to a level of less than significant? And what's the standard to assure they were?
Can I?
Yes, Drew.
Time in, thank you. So I just wanted to clarify that, you know, per the requirements of the E I R. And I believe those, you know, those requirements specific to tribal consultation um are a result of AB fifty two. When cultural resources or archaeological resources were identified um by the archaeologist in twenty twenty, they did reach out to the Norel McWintu tribe. And you heard earlier in public comment from Tracy Foster Olstead, who is a tribal cultural monitor for the Norel McWintu. Um, she was, I think, the primary representative of the tribe. Um, but she can feel free to clarify that if, if I'm, you know, misrepresenting that, that dynamic. Um, and so my take and, and myself and Ed Presley, as well as uh one of our environmental compliance specialists, Ida Tabacoli, were on site from staff. And I left the site visit feeling as though um the concerns that were previously raised by the tribe um were addressed. And I think she, she spoke to that as well in her public comment.
So I'm going to just pose a question to the supervisor so I understand kind of where we are at this point. We are either at a point where we can make a decision today about whether we're upholding or denying. We can make that uh based, we, we can make a decision that we need additional information because without information or answers to questions that we see, um, we need those answers and then bring it back. And, and so without going into the detail, I'm just trying to get a sense of. Are you, uh, how many of you are comfortable making a decision today? Identifying findings and noting issues and concerns, but a decision. And how many of you are at a point where you're not going to be comfortable making a decision today? Because you want this process to play out of getting clarification and answers to questions. I just want to know where we are.
I am comfortable making a decision today. Maybe not on the sequel portion, but there's another aspect and that's um something that I would like to dive into. And I guess now is a good time as any. Jill started it um when you raised the question of the photograph of the pump in the creek. Drew had a good question. Why? I have no answer, but I do know that it was a violation. In our initial backup data, um, staff had answered that um, C D F W went out two days later on May nineteenth. There was no pump in the creek. They couldn't prove anything had been pumped from the creek. Ergo, no violation. By looking at that photograph and reading the L S A A, which says that there will be no pump within a hundred and fifty feet of the creek that isn't in a containment. Catchment basin. They were in violation of their L S A A. I don't know if staff sent the pictures. I don't know if the appellant sent the pictures to C D F W. But the picture shows their water tanks. It shows their cistern where they're supposed to be drawing water. It shows them pumping water directly out of the creek. In violation, it doesn't matter what the date is, they can't pump straight out of the creek and they can't have a pump within a hundred and fifty feet of that creek that isn't in a, a catchment basin. A Honda pump and a gas jug setting in the creek bed is not authorized by their L S A A. The other issue I had with the L S A A. It says in there that if they changed the project, the L S A A has to be changed. It showed in their map for their L S A A that their water line was going to go around the access road to the, where the water tanks are stored. It doesn't, it goes across the wet area, straight to the county road. That was a violation of their L S A A. Is that the county's responsibility to to deal with the state's violations? Probably not, but why would the county issue a license? To someone who's already violated their state L S A A twice before they've ever even been issued a license. Um, that's one of my biggest concerns. Uh, some of the the other issues, most of my issues are with the jumping the gun. I have said it a hundred times in these meetings, I wish I could go clear cut a hundred sixty acres and then apply for a harvest plan. If you go and you apply for these things, and we did hear it in public comment, you sign a letter that said you're going to not develop. You're not going to change your site until you receive your license. And it seems like most of these issues that are brought up on appeal. It's generally because somebody has started building out without a permit. Um, we have photographs of that happening in this case. We have photographs of violations. To me, that is grounds to deny a license because obviously you have somebody that's while they checked all the boxes in sequoia, even if they're not perfect. They're not planning on playing by the rules if they've already violated them two or three times before they ever started. That, that's my personal take on it. So.
Okay. Others, are, are you, are you in a place too where you think that you're, you'll be in a position today to make a decision about this, upholding or denying? Yes? Yes, okay. Well, I saw three heads nod, so that's enough whether the other two agree or not. Well, that's assuming they all have the same answer. Right, yeah. Yes, Drew?
I just wanted to clarify um that the photos that were received were received after the director's decision. Um, and so that was not information that was available at the time when, you know, the project was approved. One of the I guess call it a, an issue um is that, you know, it looks to me based on the way the photos were provided that they're taken from maybe like a thirty five millimeter camera. And so while I don't disagree with anything Dan said, um, it just makes it quite difficult for staff to determine when those photos were taken relative to, you know, the application date and, and so on. So if that helps a little bit.
And I, I do respect that, Drew. I wasn't saying that you knew of that stuff. I'm saying that that was the initial, um, the initial appeal was based on the fact that they're drawing water from the creek illegally. That was what started the whole thing. And while the photographs can't be timestamped like our cell phones can, um, they're definitely um show that it was there and uh I can tell you it was after April because it was out from underneath the snow.
Right. And they do have the ability to divert for domestic use, but I mean, I think it's agreed that clearly they can't just set a gas power pump next to the creek and suck out of the creek. They should have been using their, you know, approved point of diversion.
So given that I'm, I'm sensing uh people are ready for a decision or they feel they're going to be there soon. Are there other things that you want to state now as to the reasons that hopefully translate into findings that we can document? To support what you're going to propose, whether it's in support of the current motion or, or a different motion? Is there anything else that you want to share?
Counsel, did you capture my reasons? Or do you want me to restate them?
I.
Or findings?
I did broadly. Um, I did state they failed to state any recognized claim for violation of lake bed and stream bed alternation agreement. Um, you did say something about a water line going across.
That would have been a, a violation of L S A A too, because it didn't go where it was proposed to go.
So the water line was, uh, water line was improper and there was also a legal drawing of water from the creek.
And then um, and I, Drew, can you clarify, uh, do I'm not even positive that we still have people sign that paper that says that they won't? They won't change their site until they're done, but do they still sign that?
Sorry, I was just unmuting. Um, Dan, were you asking whether or not that uh what we refer to as the maintain existing site conditions form is, is still utilized?
Yes.
Yes, it is. And you know, one of the things that is uh area of ambiguity, let's say, in terms of our regulatory requirements and that form specifically. Is that, uh, you know, for most cultivation sites, I guess really all cultivation sites, we could say that it's a mixed use in terms of, you know, the fact that we created um through our cannabis program, the requirement to have a residence in conjunction with a commercial cannabis license. And so um, you know, that does pose some ambiguity in terms of the evaluations related to what type of changes can they make to their site? Can they fill up water tanks to water livestock? Uh, you know, or, or are they required to do no development whatsoever even for domestic use while they have a cannabis license pending? And that's a question that I suppose is somewhat outside of this appeal, but one that we should address.
And I, I uh, I would still submit though that as one of my reasons that they changed uh their site conditions because what they did build out with was specific to cannabis cultivation and that's the, the water line that went from the tanks to the grow site.
I would like county council to read back uh findings as she has them at some point, but I would like to make sure, is there anybody else that would like to submit something for her to capture as we read that back? And then determine whether we're ready for a vote. Anything that hasn't been shared? Supervisor Gogan?
Yeah, I would ask and I, I don't know who to ask, it probably would be Tom. Do they have to have the pond? Sorry to put you on. Sure.
Is that part of?
Well, I think the other things have been addressed in the you know, the cultural and the fish thing has been addressed. The pond is really bothersome to me. Digging a million, a million gallon pond. Seems extraordinarily large to me for what they're trying to do here, especially since they got eight or ten huge tanks on there.
And so whether or not the pond was involved would influence your decision of upholding the appeal or denying it?
I think it would certainly trigger sequoia. By all means.
Okay.
A hundred by hundred foot million gallon pond probably would.
I think the pond is a safety mechanism uh that if, for instance, the tanked water feels like it's not enough, they would have the option of doing the pond. It is not a requirement to proceed. So they could either bifurcate it or say no, if that would get us in a different answer. It is not an essential part of the plan. It is uh foresight to, hey, we could always use more water on a cannabis site. B, uh, if you look around, hadn't shot, there's a lot of burned trees up there. Uh, so water is a good thing to have in the summer.
Would you agree this would uh cause sequoia to come into effect?
Well, I think to the extent the pond is a standalone project. It is a project, which means it implicates sequoia. Now, would it be considered you know, a categorical exemption if it were separate, not related to cannabis? If say five years from now, they had their license, five years from now, hey, we want to do a pond. It's going to need a grading permit. I'm not sure the circumstance of whether fish and wildlife on the water board need to sign off on it. I believe if it's outside a stream and it's only water catchment. It has not got a requirement to sign off other than our grading permit.
I'm sorry, Tom, I'm just going to interrupt. So I, I think I'm allowing to ask a question about what the applicant would or wouldn't you know, promote, but we're asking now legal advice, not from our county council. So if we have a question to the county council or staff about whether it would trigger a sequel, that's fine, but I appreciate, and I appreciate your willingness to answer the question, but I think we answered the question that you should.
While I'm here, I, I have a genuine point of order.
Okay.
As has been the practice. When an appeal of a director's decision fails at the planning commission, the license is issued. This license has been issued. Severn has a piece of paper with Trinity County seal on it. So if you're talking about denying this license, what you're talking about is revoking license. I'm not sure what that means in terms of the findings you need to make or the motion you need to make, if that's what you're contemplating. I just do want you to know that this is, the, the decision has been made and executed. So we're, we're a little bit past that. Thank you.
Any clarification you'd like to make on uh that last statement uh county council or the question that was being directed to Tom that really should come towards you? Or Drew?
Yes, uh, I'll do the second one part. Uh, Drew can address a little bit more on the secret issue. I, I think it's correct. It would potentially trigger it. But again, we have to look at the factual situation. Um, and as to the second part, the findings will address the fact that a conditional permit gets issued as part of it. So we can put that language in there.
Okay, thank you. So Drew, then I think supervisor Gogan was coming back to this issue of the pond to say uh, we are hearing that that is a, not a mandatory requirement of moving forward the program or the, the project. Um, but a safety net item. And then the question was if it was going to go forward with the million gallon pond, would that, uh, would, should that uh require sequoia analysis? Drew, we can't hear you if you're still with us. You still, so, oh, there you go. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say that um generally speaking, you know, any ground disturbing activities would be addressed um through sequoia. You know, through the final approved E I R um and the tier document, the appendix C document. So from my perspective, it, it wouldn't be a standalone sequel project per se. But those activities related to that site development and ground disturbing activities are addressed in this appendix C document.
Wait a minute, I, we're still talking about the pond, right?
Correct.
So I thought that previously when I asked that question, you said that the pond wasn't addressed in the secret document because it didn't need to be yet because it was only proposed as a mitigation measure.
But the, and the, the construction part is analyzed in other sections. But the pond as a whole, I, yeah. I'm not worried. I don't know that we'll get an answer on that.
Okay.
So yeah, it is a bit nuanced, I guess, but, but simply the activities related to the construction of a pond generally are addressed through the E I R and in the appendix C document. Um, the pond. The pond and its size and volume is referenced a number of times in that appendix C document, and I can certainly pull up some of the applicable sections if if that's helpful.
Um, no. I guess if anything, counsel, I'm I need to now ask about this revoking of a license. So we, if we uphold the appeal, we're revoking the license or we are, okay?
Correct. So the process has been that when director's use permit is issued and it gets upheld through the planning commission proceedings, a conditional license is issued. That is can be and revoked during this process. So it will, it will be, the findings ultimately will be, if the board is to move forward, would be to approve the appeal and revoke the conditional license that was issued pending approval of this appeal.
Okay, and I feel like that even if we were to go back and like at one point you had said, well, we could, you know, just say that we we need this to circle back and extra mitigation measures be be put in place. It feels to me like this has components to it that are outside the scope of our programmatic EIR generally because the area is unique. I've said that and I'm still continuing to feel that way, like this needs its own analysis. That it doesn't fit the box of the other projects that are within our program. And and so yeah, I don't know what that means. Does it mean it gets its own EIR?
What what in what context do you is you're stating that it falls outside the programmatic ER?
From the standpoint that what the residents are sharing is that there are uniquenesses to this area culturally, historically. You know, with regard to this flower, which, I mean, you've said it doesn't come up on on a particular register. So in that sense, according to our program, it wouldn't matter. But according to residents and history, it does matter. And so to me, it's like, I just feel as though it hasn't been analyzed fully. Even and I keep going back to, okay, did we mitigate to a level less than significant? Any of these things that you could mitigate, I can't hear the appellant and those in that, you know, agreement with that saying, okay, yeah, you finally got it to a level of less than significant because it is unique in a way that these documents don't address. Does it make sense?
Yes.
I think it does make sense in this. You may agree or disagree with this, but the programmatic ERR did address those things. It went through public comment. It went through a legal process. It was not litigated. And we are where we are. So I I think it 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 did address those things and the public did have an opportunity to provide input. But now maybe if there's more of these or there's a desire of this board to, you know, provide different direction, then that's an option for this particular board. But I do believe our programmatic ERR, excuse me, did go through the proper processes. Again, that's a different time than today. But it did go through the proper processes.
I understood, and I wouldn't I wouldn't argue that it didn't go through the proper process. I would circle back to what Supervisor Chair Littwiler said originally when you were talking about, you know, the the language that the appellant used when they first filled out their form. And your point was, you know, did they go hire lawyers and consultants to help them know, okay, exactly what language should you really put on that in order for it to have the teeth that your intention is? And this is the same way in my mind. Yes, the public had an opportunity, but at the time that that analysis was going on and they had the chance to speak into it, did they know how to have the crystal ball to say, okay, and if you don't comment in these ways, A, B, C, and D, then the result is going to be what we're sitting here with today. And just because they didn't know that and we didn't have the crystal ball, does that then mean it just doesn't matter or can't matter? Because I would say that culturally, it does matter. And I think that to let that go and say, well, it just can't because that was then and you didn't put the right language there is really I don't want to use the word unfair because it has a deeper meaning that it's missing an oversight that is our responsibility to provide.
And I think, and I've raised this in the past, I think we're 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 missing it is we're trying to capture CEQA stuff that's not CEQA stuff. And my concern with these more delicate, we'll call them, applications is rather than the going, to me, the appeal process should have been an appeal of the DUP and and they're the director and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, but to me, the director has the ability in these situations to elevate this to a conditional use permit. And I think that's probably would have been the better answer. And some of these these last couple of appeals that we've dealt with is there has to be a way to mitigate the specific concerns. And the only way to do that is if you condition the permit to the specific concerns. That's and until we get to that point, that's why I'm that's why I made the motion to uphold the appeal is because I think that we have to find a way to address those concerns. And 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 CEQA, to me, is not the way to do it. CEQA is to address the overarching concern of the fact that we were having major environmental problems during a green rush. CEQA will address that. CEQA doesn't address the details of each specific license. Most of the licenses that are applied for and receive a DUP or whatever, it's not even a DUP, it's just a director's signature. We never hear about because they do fall under that and everything's fine. It it everything moves forward without a hitch. It's the ones that don't fit that we have this problem with. And and I think we have to we have to get to the point of looking at those ones differently than than everything else.
I think Drew has his hand up, I think, probably wanting to respond to some of this discussion about programmatic ER versus site specific and so forth. Go ahead, Drew.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of respond to some of Supervisor Cox's statements about that the impacts of the program and site specific impacts would all need to be mitigated to less than significant. And refer you all to the statement of overriding considerations that was adopted along with the approval and final adoption of the IR. I can read a little excerpt if that's helpful, but I mean, basically the gist of it is that, you know, there are significant unavoidable effects. And the the quick little excerpt I'll read is, you know, the board finds that all feasible mitigation measures identified in the final EIR within the purview of the county will be implemented with the implementation of the cannabis program. And that the remaining significant unavoidable effects are outweighed and are found to be acceptable due to the following specific overriding economic, legal, social, technological, or other benefits based upon the facts set forth above. And I won't read the specifics, but hopefully that gives you a little more clarity for your discussion.
I appreciate that. And but then, if you're really going to go there, you're going to have to dive deeply into psychological, sociological, not just economical. All of those things that are there, and we're going to have a whole nother conversation. And what we're saying is that all feasible mitigation measures, I believe, it states have been met. And I think what we're stating here is maybe not necessarily in this case. I'm not comfortable that they have. So while yes, that's there, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. And it doesn't change, it doesn't change where I land.
So anything, oh, go ahead, Drew.
I was just gonna say, I would ask just just for understanding. What specific impacts do you feel are not sufficiently addressed and or mitigated in this specific environmental document?
Well, I think that's exactly what we've been discussing for the last couple of hours, right, that we're capturing. Yeah.
Is there anything else that somebody would like to add before I have county council read back what we have so far? No. Would you please?
Okay, now I will read back. These are full findings, so it's a page long. So it's your pleasure if you want to interrupt me for corrections or you want to take notes and come back. This is my attempts to hours of conversation. So proposed findings, I read the first section. Appellant did not state any specific violations of the California Environmental Quality Act, but did state language that would lead the board to consider this to be appeal of CEQA violations. In his notice of appeal, appellant referred generally to broad considerations related to the impacts of water usage and buildings and fish in both creeks. Although vague, the board determined appellant wrote enough to trigger review of any violations of CEQA. Number two, to the extent that appellant has appealed undergrounds not including CEQA, he has raised issues related to water, which the board finds include appellants, sorry, applicants violation of its lake and stream bed alternation agreement, LSAA. The board finds that the appellant has changed the site conditions while license was pending, improperly placed a water line on the property and drew water from the creek illegally. Appellants, sorry, applicants failure to follow state law, its grounds for upholding the appeal and revoking the conditional license that was issued pending the results of the appeal. Item number three, to the extent appellant states specific claims under CEQA, the appellant has failed to demonstrate through substantial evidence any of the violations of the act, more specifically. Appellant raised the issue of the keton lily and the fact that it was not considered in CEQA review. The biological reconnaissance survey was complete and this plant species is not addressed from the regulatory requirements perspective. As a result, there is no violation of the act. Appellant has not identified or produced evidence to demonstrate the approval of the CCL did not adequately identify and adopt mitigation measures concerning water resources. The project affects. Appellant also failed to identify any specific buildings on the CCL which would have impacts or identify the nature and extent of such impacts or how the project's mitigation measures would adequately identify such impacts. Appellant has not identified specific impacts of the project would have on aquatic species or habitats that are not already discussed or mitigated in the project's environmental determination. The appellant has raised issues that the board has concerns, but is not prepared to decide on this time as it's not required based on the granting of the appeal in violation of LSAA. However, if this project were to come back for the to the board, it would be expected that the following would be addressed. Appellant raised concerns regarding cultural resources components that was not properly addressed as a part of CEQA review. Appellant raised issues that issues that of inaccuracies in the CEQA appendix C. For example, the proposed building site and grow sites were listed on disturbed sites when they were on undisturbed sites, which were not properly captured in the CEQA documents. And C, appellant noted, the project has changed after CEQA documents and required CEQA to be updated.
Two things, one, based on what we were hearing about conditional license, should we be referring to applicant or conditional license holder?
CCL. I'll make that change. I, yes, we'll call them CCLs for this.
And then I don't disagree with everything I heard you say, but I don't remember hearing any board members say anything about the buildings.
You know, I apologize. I, as I was reading that, I recognize I should take that out. I, as I said, I kind of do some general ones getting in here, and that was one that that was not specifically stated. We did not believe buildings applied. So thank you.
Did anybody have anything else that they would like to clarify from what they were trying to communicate or what they said or didn't say? Would you read back the part about? Sounds like when we were having a discussion about would we basically make a decision that allowed for a revisiting of things? And I and I'm not sure that that's where this group is because they're saying we're ready to decide.
Correct. So I typically will put that language in. So let's say this were to be appealed and it would come back that that these would still be issues that the board would need to see modified before it comes back to them. So I'm happy to take it out, but I it's just more guidance.
Could you just read it again for me, please?
So however, the project would come back to the board, we expected the following would be addressed. Appellant raised issues on the cultural resource component that was not properly addressed as part of the CEQA review. Appellant raised issues that there was in a, that there was inaccuracies in the CEQA appendix C. For example, the proposed building pond and grow sites were listed on disturbed sites when they are actually on undisturbed sites, which was not properly captured in the CEQA documents. And appellant noted that the project has changed after the CEQA documents were prepared and required CEQA to be updated. Again, any of these can be removed. I'm just trying to capture everything as it was going.
Thank you. You're good. Okay, does does anyone have a competing motion? Any further discussion?
I would request that the motion be modified to include these findings.
Okay, that started with you, Supervisor Fraser.
I would agree to modify my motion to uphold the appeal to include the findings as just so eloquently read by our council.
And do we need any rewording?
We need a second or two.
I will second that.
Rewording to reflect the license holder versus.
She.
Correct, it's in the findings, but it would be great if the the motion also said that for clarity that you're
You're going to correct applicant to CCL seven one?
Know that the you're upholding the appeal and revoking the conditional license that was issued pending the results of the appeal. My second.
Ashley, you can call the vote.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Chairman Littwiler.
Aye.
Let's take a five minute break.
Thank you, sir.
Ashley, are you okay with us continuing? Okay, five minute break. Um, Ashley, are you okay with us continuing? Okay, five minute break. You don't even have the room for me to wrangle in.
Fasterator.
Traditional cannabis, the conditional, like, CCL. What is CCL? Commercial cannabis license holder or license?
License. License.
License. So I have to put a holder in it to make it correct. Okay.
You said CCL. Um, sure.
I got it right.
Yes.
Okay, we are going to resume.
Whoa, what the heck? I'll break your stuff. I have to check your seat.
The second item under cannabis in county matters is five point three, adopt a resolution authorizing the State of California Cannabis Equity Act Agreement funding and authorize the county administrative officer to execute the grant agreement. Revenue up to one million eight hundred twelve thousand seven hundred twenty nine dollars and fifty two cents to cannabis division from grant funds.
Good afternoon, Chair Supervisors, Drew Labonte, Cannabis Division Director. Hopefully, uh, an easier item for us. Um, so in December, um, this resolution and some updates to the local equity program manual were presented to you all. I want to acknowledge the fact that uh, when I took the template resolution that was provided to us from the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, I inserted Board of Supervisors um, into the now therefore be it resolved section of the resolution where I should have inserted an actual um, title of who was authorized by the board to um, sign to receive this grant funding. And so that is the change we just modified from the resolution that you all approved, uh, twenty twenty three dash one four four on December fifth to include that the county administrative officer was authorized to sign on your behalf to receive these grant funds.
Thank you, Drew. Any questions for staff? Public comment?
I have no raised hands.
In the room. Okay, we have a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman LeWiler?
Aye.
Thank you. Mean that you get to go actually restart vacation? He's already gone.
No, I'm still here. Thank you.
Uh, Drew, seriously, thank you so much. I know, you know, this wasn't fun for anyone, uh, much less you, um, trying to enjoy your time away and uh, much much well deserved time away. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks and for putting up with, uh, you know, whatever disruption it may have been for me to be on Zoom and not in person. So thank you all.
Not at all. Thank you. Planning and zoning, item five point four, waive the reading of and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section seventeen point one eight point zero six zero pertaining to building height in the multifamily district R three. Introduce November seventh, twenty twenty three, no fiscal impact.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Mitchell Wexler, the assistant planner for the planning division of Trinity County, and I am presenting the proposed ordinance amendment to the height limit on structures for R three zoning within the Weaverville Fire Protection District. This item originated with um, the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four Trinity County housing element. This element had under its objectives and programs list, object one point one, that it, we should go over height limits within the county, specifically R three zoning, to see if it would lead to any kind of issues regarding housing for the county. As part of the county's work, we have done research in this regard and we had found that within our zoning, the only two zoning types within residential that did not have a forty foot height limit were residential office and R three. We also referenced nearby counties with regards to how they handled these situations. The average height that was found for those counties was forty four point one six height or as a height limit for R three zoning. This contrasted with the current twenty five foot height proposed. The item was first introduced to the Board of Supervisors on September sixth of this last year. And one of the major concerns was that there would be fire departments nearby in other communities in the county that did have R three zoning and would not have the equipment to respond in the fashion in which they wish to. These were Hayfork and Lewiston. Those two communities did not have the proper fire equipment. And as, and for that reason, they recommended via the Fire Chief Association that this not go forward. The ultimate decision, or the ultimate decision was made to have this be within the boundaries of the Weaverville Fire Protection District as that fire department does have the equipment necessary to reach the height of a forty five foot building and respond to the emergency in the manner as they wish. The item was introduced again with said language on the seventh of November of twenty twenty three. The motion passed five to zero in favor of this amendment. However, due to an error with the submitted language, that's still qualified as a first reading of the item, pardon me for that. And this would be the second reading, and please forgive me for the strange printed ordinance portion. There was an error in communication that I misunderstood regarding last Friday and as a result, there was bit of a mix up. But either way, it's still the same ordinance that would be passed overall and it would still have the same outcome of bringing building heights to forty five feet. It was changed to forty five feet early in the process due to a recommendation from a commissioner as that is the construction standard that is often set. The planning division recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve item number five point four to waive the reading of and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Sections eighteen, seventeen point eighteen point zero six zero pertaining to building height in the multifamily district introduced November seventh, twenty twenty three. The alternatives include waiting until the comprehensive zoning ordinance update to modify the height limits within the R three district or to not amend the height limit for the R three zoning district.
Okay. Thank you. Great job presenting and I applaud your uh, living out our value of accountability and owning up to the errors of your way. You set a good example for the rest of us. Any questions?
No.
Pretty complete.
I have one for the CAO did, um, the developer get back to you on that height limit question you have for him? Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think we're good. No more questions, public comment.
I'm assuming this is high density housing. Um, I was shocked to see how much area in Weaverville has high density housing. I mean, that mountain back over there could be all forty foot buildings. I mean, that's all high incidence the housing over there. And uh, ransom road, which I figured that was the one you were going for. And also behind Victorian Inn, you can have a forty foot building there. But the one that shocked me was all that property back over there, you can have forty foot buildings on. And uh, I don't want to see that.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
Second?
I will make a second.
Any discussion?
Just because we had public comment, I'll uh, give what I think would be my answer to that. Um, well, I agree, I don't want to see all of Weaverville be forty five foot tall buildings. I think that would be the portion that we would address when we take on the zoning ordinance and and change that zoning instead of limiting the ability for building actual apartment complexes in the areas that they fit. So.
Thank you for saying that publicly, and I was going to say that to our commenter privately, but I appreciate you doing it. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, call the vote.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman LeWiler?
Aye.
Uh, closed session report out from last meeting. I have four items and deputy clerk of the board, hopefully you can keep me on track. Uh, five point one, government code section five four nine five four point five C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation number of cases three inmate Garbutt incident at jail, inmate Swain incident at jail, claim TR one two three dash zero zero seven, inmate Lewandowski incident at jail and no reportable action. Five point two, government code section five four nine five four point five C, conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation, number of cases one. Cannabis code enforcement fine slash fee settlement authority and direction was given to staff. Five point three, government code section five four nine five four point five F, conference with labor negotiators, counties designated representatives to be determined. Employee organizations, general unit, and uh, the stat or the board action was to appoint Leila Cassis, Suzie Hawkins and Margaret Long as our representatives. Five point four, government code section five four nine five four point five E, public employee appointment, county council, direction was given to staff. Okay. With that, we will uh, be moving into closed session. I will open up for public comment regarding closed session. Pardon me?
Items first?
Oh, thank you. Six point one, government code section five four nine five four point five E, public employee appointment, county council. Six point two, government code section five point, five four nine five four point five C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, number of cases one, FTF Farms of Trinity Forests. Thank you for that. And now, public comment. Any online?
I have no raised hands.
Any in the room? Okay, with that, we will move. Thank you.